Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I think we're getting somewhere now. Can all the Zoom people, if you can hear me, can you wave? Okay, thank you. And what about the Select Board? Can you hear me? Thank you. Okay, we're ready to start. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting in Concord of July 26, 2021. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on Minuteman Media Network. The Select Board will be meeting live or over Zoom for the next several months in accordance with Mass Open Meeting Law. We may from time to time have Select Board members join virtually, such as I am today, and we encourage members of the public to continue to access the Select Board meetings via Zoom or in person. Both locations will be posted on the meeting agenda. If you are attending our meeting in person, please take this opportunity to switch your phone now to a silent mode. We have a very long meeting tonight, so I'm going to ask everyone to please be brief and concise with your comments. And we will begin now with the consent calendar. The Select Board screen is mute on Zoom.
Okay.
Hey, can you, Matt, can you please read that consent calendar?
Sure. Move to approve the consent calendar, including the minutes of June 1st and June 7th, as amended today and redistributed in our packet. The Town Accountant Warrants of July 15, 2021, and June 22, 2021, and one day special liquor licenses to Heritage Pool and Racket Club, Salt Box Kitchen, and Vero Farm.
Please note that I was not a member of the board on June 1st or June 7th and will not vote on the approval of those minutes, so I will be present on that.
Okay, so I will split the consent agenda into moving to approve the minutes of June 1st as well as the minutes of June 7th, as amended and redistributed in our packet today.
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Okay, then move to approve the Town Accountant Warrants of July 15, 2021, and June 22, 2021, and one day special liquor licenses to the Heritage Pool and Racket Club, Salt Box Kitchen, and Vero Farm.
Second.
So I just have a question. On the Town Warrants, I noticed that there were a number of vehicles that are leased, and I'm just wondering if if that's, it was leased from several different companies, and I'm wondering if that's standard in terms of us leasing versus purchasing? And then I was also wondering how that lined up with our fleet electrification policy. You know, when we go out for the leases, are we doing level one, trying to get electric?
I believe departments are trying to get electric or hybrid for all vehicles, or if there is a suitable, you know, operational match in terms of the others, I'd have to, I'm not really sure. It would depend on the vehicle department, I have to do a little digging, but if you want to let me know the ones you're concerned about, I can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for a vote?
We are, yes.
Okay, Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson. Hi.
Thank you. Now we will have a brief Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, everyone. As Terry noted, due to the length of the meeting tonight, I'm just going to, the printed reporters in the packet happy to answer questions on it. The only other item of note that was not in the printed report that we I think we received some calls today about the hazy air quality, and that is a result of the wildfires in the western part of the country being the smoke and, you know, atmosphere being carried by the jet stream. So if you see haze or are concerned, we did send out our news notices, but for those who don't get it, it's a result of the wildfires in the west. Any questions about the printed report?
Yeah, I do. There were a couple of, I think, important events recently that were not covered by the report. One was the, the decision in the SIM case, which we met in executive session with the planning board and made a, made a decision that we would not, not pursue an appeal of that case. We drafted a joint statement together with the Chair of the Planning Board, and it was, it was modified by Town Council. I think you received a copy of that.
Yes. Henry, if I could just interject, yes, thank you for working on that, and that statement will be going out, I believe, on Monday. Happy.
That's right. That answers my question.
Yeah, we were waiting on the deadline for the appeal.
I think it was the 20th of March.
Hey, check this one. The advisor waited until tomorrow.
The other thing that I wanted, was not covered, was the, I think, the first meeting of the, of the rec, the regional regional dispatch project, which took place in Acton last week. And I think that's something that we would like to hear from you about, because I think it's clear that that is a fait accompli at this point. Officers were elected, the Town Manager of Acton was elected, the Chair of the Committee, and decisions were made for the expenditure of, I think, approximately a million dollars, and the hiring of an Executive Director and a Project Manager. And I think we'd appreciate your keeping us informed on that.
Sure.
Thank you, Henry. I understand you attended that meeting. I think we should, at our next meeting, discuss having a liaison for the Regional Dispatch. And Stephen, if you would just give us the highlights at your next Town Manager's Report, that would be great. So now let's move on, unless anyone has any other questions. Let's move on to some very brief Chair's remarks. I attended the Chair's Breakfast, and there are quite a few vacancies. We urge all the citizens attending tonight and all of your friends and neighbors to please consider we need lots of great talent in town. We have vacancies on the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, the 2025 Executive Committee and its subcommittees, the Bicycle Subcommittee of the Transportation Committee, the Council on Aging, Head Advisory Committee, Historic Districts Commission, Fed Finance Committee, and they would prefer someone with business experience, Tax Fairness, Middle School Building Committee, we're looking for someone with construction experience, Public Schools and Celebrations, and the Natural Resources Commission. As far as the Select Board goes, we have two announcements. Ag Day will be September 11th this year. We would like to do a booth again, the way we did two years ago, and at the booth, we can distribute green cards and recruit citizens for these committees. So Jeremy, if you could send out a notice to all the Select Board asking if people would sign up, maybe if we each do a half hour or an hour at that booth. And finally, Jeremy has asked all of us to please review the Select Board webpages. He would like suggestions on how to make our pages more informative and functional. That's for the Select Board pages. Thanks for doing that, Jeremy. And at this time, we would like to go to the next item, which is diversity, equity, inclusion. I would just like to state that we have many attendees tonight. Welcome to all of you, and thank you so much for attending. This is going to be the first of several or many conversations about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. I want to, well, we have an excellent draft, draft charge prepared by the League of Women Voters, which is in our packet, but we probably will not get to the details of that charge tonight. This is an introductory conversation to talk about how the entire community can help brainstorm what we can do to improve DEI in Concord. So I want to thank the Women Voters, the Communities Organized Against Racism, the First Parish Church, the West Concord Union Church, Concord Human Rights Council, Concord Public Schools, and all of the other participants tonight. Since we have so many speakers, please try to be brief and, um, let's say, no more than five minutes per speaker. So the first person I'm going to call on is Nancy Brown, who is meeting the League of Women Voters Committee on DEI. And Nancy, I don't see you. I'm sure you're there.
I am here.
Okay, thank you.
I am Nancy Brown. I live at 96 Forest Ridge Road, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord-Carlyle, an organization which has approximately 200 members. The murder of George Floyd awoke the nation to the challenge of confronting the racial inequities that have plagued our nation since its inception. Much as we would all like to assume that Concord is a diverse, welcoming community, free of prejudice and inequality, we must recognize that Concord too struggles with some of the same issues as face our neighboring communities and communities throughout our nation. The fact that this problem is so widespread may feel overwhelming, but it also means that others have walked before us, and we can learn from the efforts of neighboring communities to address these issues. One, my question, whether the League of Women Voters of Concord-Carlyle and the other organizations which will be speaking today are the appropriate organizations to be promoting the formation of a DEI Commission in Concord, given that most of our members are white, and in case of the League, predominantly white women. However, DEI is the work of all of us, as we are all harmed by hatred, prejudice, and lack of diversity. I am joined today by representatives of communities organizing against racism, or First Parish in Concord and West Concord Union Church, and the Concord Human Rights Council, who has written a letter, was not able to send someone today because of an emergency. These are some of the many organizations in Concord who are seeking to foster diversity, equity, and inclusion in our town. The members of the Concord Select Board serve as the chief elected officials in our community, and as such, you hold an important leadership role. We are here tonight to ask you to assume that role in the appointment of a DEI Commission to address DEI issues in Concord on a townwide basis. We understand that the Town Manager has taken steps to examine DEI issues among town employees, and the schools have hired a DEI Coordinator to address issues at the schools. Other groups in Concord have also taken steps to educate their members, and many actions have been taken on an individual or organizational basis. Our request is that the Select Board take the important step of addressing DEI issues on a broader scale, as has been done in many of our neighboring communities. And it is critical that such a commission reflect diverse Concord voices. Representatives here with the other organization will express their support for the formation of such a commission and share a few examples of the challenges faced by minorities in our community. We will then talk briefly about the draft charge, although, as Terry said, we will not try to cover that in any detail tonight, but we have prepared it for your consideration, and it is in your packet. You will also find in your packet information about the accomplishments of some of the DEI Commissions in neighboring towns. We very much appreciate this opportunity to engage with the Select Board in addressing a problem which faces all Concordians. And now, with your permission, I'd like to turn the podium over to Erin Fife of Core.
Thank you very much, Nancy, and thank you for all of the thoughtful ideas that you've contributed in the packet. Erin Fife, if you would like to come to the microphone, if you're live, or, okay, thank.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Ackerman and members of the Select Board. My name is Erin Fife, and I have been a Concord resident for the last 10 years. As Nancy mentioned, the Concord-Carlyle Human Rights Council were not able to be here speaking tonight, but there are a number of members who would like to express their support tonight by, by being here both in person and on Zoom. I am also here tonight representing CORE, Communities Organizing Against Racism, a group that has grown significantly over the last two years, and that now includes over 100 community members. As a white person who grew up in a predominantly white community and who now lives as an adult in another predominantly white community, I am rarely forced to talk about race or put myself in the shoes of my neighbors who do not look like me. When I listen to the stories of my friends of color, I can't help but feel that Concord is a very different place for them than it is for me. Last year, at Ride Out Playground, a white child walked up to a child of color and asked them where they were from. The child of color answered, "Here." The white child responded, "No, you're not." Recently, a family of color walked into a store in Concord Center. The store employee immediately engaged the family of color, asking them, "Where are you from? How did you find our store?" None of these questions were asked of the white family who entered the store at the same time. The store clerk ended the conversation by telling the family of color that there was nothing in the store they would be interested in. These stories happened to residents of Concord, our neighbors and friends. And while you could argue that these incidents were not deliberate acts of racism or filled with malice, the net effect of events like these result in community members feeling singled out, threatened, or excluded. Through my conversations in CORE, I've heard so many examples of well-intentioned people saying or doing things that make our neighbors feel like outsiders, and I've realized how many times I've been that well-intentioned person. It takes coordinated, long-term action to raise awareness, identify and address bias, and affect change at a community level. We believe that an official, town-initiated, and sanctioned DEI Commission is the next step in systematically driving more discussion and learning, offering a path for greater awareness to all members of our community, to improve our community for all. Thank you. And with the Board's permission, I'd like to invite Rose Craxley, who is also a support of CORE, to speak.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Rose?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Rose Felix Craxley, and I reside at 79 Hillcrest Road in Concord. I live in Concord with my five children and my husband, and we are comprised of a family that, on my husband's side, has been residing in Concord for four generations, and on my side, three generations. I'm actually here with my mom, who is here tonight as well. And I'm here because this is a very personal matter to me. I also had an organization called Ivy Child International, where we develop and facilitate mindfulness health education programs for systems of education and care. And we are based here in Concord. We have a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and cultivating belonging. As I said, you know, residing in Concord for the last nearly six years, I can go through a range of experiences that I've had, from wonderful assets of joy and joyful experiences, as well as ongoing experiences of microaggressions and what I would call microassaults. And while the intent is rarely one of harm, the impact is harmful. And what we've seen on both a national level and local level is that in the, in this moment of unprecedented challenges of these last nearly two years, year and a half plus, our kids have been significantly impacted. And while efforts have been made, perhaps in silos across the community, we do not have a unified, coordinated, cohesive effort to really address this as a community. And that is so essential and integral for our collective well-being and the, and the multiple generations that reside here. So my ask is personal, and I'm asking for your care and commitment to the long-term strategic efforts that can then join hands with the school, join hands with other, you know, faith organizations and other community-based organizations to really lead in this effort in a much more unified manner, both for ourselves and for our families and our larger community. And the time is now, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And are Nancy, do you have some other speakers?
I'm meeting with. Yes. Pat Brewer. First Parish is going to speak.
Okay, I didn't catch the name. The person from First Parish, please come to the microphone if you are here.
Hi, I'm Pat Brewer. I have lived in Concord for 31 years. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss the development of a DEI Commission. I am a member of CORE and a member of First Parish in Concord, where I serve on the Racial Justice Action Group. First Parish supports the League of Women Voters' request to create a DEI Commission for our town. We have been involved with the League throughout this process, and our Standing Committee has sent a letter of support to your Board. At First Parish, we continue to examine our own practices within our church community, centering around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We recognize from experience the challenges of this work, both within institutions and the community. Some of our members resisted hanging the Black Lives Matter banner, and the banner was stolen by an unknown party shortly after it was displayed. We had hung the banner to initiate conversation, not vandalism. We believe with the newly created DEI position in our school and a DEI Commission for our town, our concerted efforts will complement one another and continue to make Concord an even more welcoming community. Thank you. With your permission, I would like to invite Matt DeGrief from the West Concord Union Church to come forward.
Thank you. Matt, please come forward.
Yeah, thank you. It's a lifelong curse. Good evening. My name is Matt DeGrief. I reside at 1400 Lowell Road in Concord, Mass, and I've been here for 19 years, starting my 20th year as a resident. I am the Church Moderator at West Concord Union Church. I'm joined by Andrew Southcott, who's our clerk. West Concord Union Church is in full support of this initiative. We were honored to be able to communicate with the, with you folks about this opportunity to bring these issues forward. West Concord Union Church was founded in the 1890s by prison workers, and our church, back then, the residents who worked at the church, I mean, who worked at the prison, were able to live and afford living in Concord. And we all know that the people who are currently at the prison would not be able to live in Concord. And we feel that, that our history as a church, as a church of the people who worked in the town of Concord in many ways, is part of a core part of our identity and our, our belief in the social justice issues in this community. And we feel that we are doing our own work, looking at our own history, our current practices and policies, and our future as a, as a faith community around diversity, equity, inclusion issues. So it's very part, very much a part of the ethos and fabric of our community. I also would like to say, as a father of two daughters who are of color, my wife is also a member of CORE, one of the founding members, that this is also personally important to me. My daughter, who's now going into sixth grade on her first day of kindergarten at the Thoreau School, encountered racism on her first day of kindergarten. So it is deeply personal to me that the opportunity for our community to educate ourselves, talk about our history, talk about our present and our future will only make our community more welcoming and better in the long term. So I really appreciate the opportunity to represent West Concord Union Church, and we look forward to participating on this commission and helping this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Do we have other speakers from your group, Nancy? If not, I would like to invite the, the people from the schools. Oh, here comes Nancy.
Okay, we don't have more. We're looking forward to conversation.
Thank you very much, all the speakers. Very interesting. Uh, so we have here from the schools, Lori Hunter, Cynthia Rainey, Andrew. I am totally not going to be able to pronounce your name. I apologize. Who would like to speak from the Concord Public Schools?
I think I'll hop in and just maybe use this more as a time to introduce Andrew than anything else. We have obviously tried to get this work started and had a, a good foundation laid over the last couple of years. And this, you know, this position, we're hoping will take it to another level of the journey of trying to make our schools inclusive and welcoming for everyone. So Andrew Niamichi, we can practice it, Terry. Niamichi is our new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And he's been our MECO Director and is now going to work with us on a broader level across all of the schools. And I think, you know, we're really building the vision for his position as he enters the district with a new lens and works both outwardly with the community and primarily, of course, in classrooms with teachers and students and families. And we'll be putting that entry plan together this fall, and then Andrew will be endeavoring on another layer of this work. So I don't think this is a journey that ends. I think this is a, you know, phase of the continuum in the circle. And we've partnered with CORE and a number of other local groups, and we're looking forward to continuing that. And of course, are here to be part of whatever the Select Board decides at a community level would be important to us.
Thank you very much, Lori. Andrew Niamichi, did I have that right now?
That's, that's perfect.
All right. Would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. So yeah, definitely excited for my new role in, in the district, but even more excited that the town has taken this new direction to, you know, affirm and create a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee from the community aspect. You know, I'm looking forward this year really to partner with all members of our school community, you know, from students, teachers, support staff, administrators, parents, and guardians, our school committee, and the community at large, to really strengthen our school culture and climate, you know, ensure it is grounded in equity, and also to hopefully leverage diversity and inclusion in everything that we do. You know, from the surveys we've done in the past, from the school standpoint, you know, specifically at our high school at, at Concord-Carlyle, we see that over 70 countries are represented in just our high school. So that says a lot about our community, right? Concord is an all-white, and so I think this new DEI Commission, hopefully, one of the goals will be to, you know, highlight some of the experiences that you heard tonight, you know, some of those experiences from our marginalized communities that live in Concord. Make sure that. Make sure that they are being heard and of course, work towards, you know, inclusion and of course, belonging for everyone in, in, in the Concord community. So I'm really excited to partner with the community as we endeavor through this, this, the school year. So thank you for the invite.
Thank you. That's exciting. 70 countries.
And counting.
Yeah. Okay, Cynthia or anyone else from the school department want to add anything?
Sure, I'll just say a few brief words. First of all, Sarah Wilson, who's Chair of the Regional School Committee, is in the audience. So I want to acknowledge that. I see her. And I'm not sure if she would like to say something or not. From the school committee's perspective, you know, we have a role in terms of policy and in terms of budget to support our DEI efforts in the schools. And it's very, very important, I feel like, that we collaborate with the whole community if we're going to be successful in our endeavors in the schools. The school committee will be discussing this throughout the year often and frequently and potentially we might form a subcommittee because we know how important this is. So, but that's for the committee to discuss. So I'm not sure exactly what direction we will take. So I really appreciate the conversation tonight, and I look forward to collaborating with all of these community members. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. Sarah Wilson. Are here.
Hi. I just, I want to echo what Lori and Andrew and Cynthia have said. We all really appreciate being invited here tonight to see the collaborative process that you guys have started. It's going to take collaboration, cooperation, and, and we're just very excited to be part of, part of the conversation with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. We definitely look forward to working with the schools and hearing your ideas. You know, it's really great that there are so many groups here tonight. There is no one group that can do this alone. If the community said, "Select Board, figure it out," we'd be basically clueless. We really need the whole community working together on this. So I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight. So before I turn to questions and comments from select board members, is there any other group here that I have forgotten to call on?
That's okay.
Okay, if not, then we will take questions and comments from select board members and then from community members.
Susan, you should. Maybe I should just call on people, Terry, since it may be difficult for you to see, people are.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Matt.
Hi, I want to thank everyone for coming and when we first started talking about this, it just seemed so daunting to me because I didn't want this to be a, oh, we'll do a DEI committee check, that's done. Because to me, it's a soul-searching, very personal thing that each of us does. And I wasn't clear how that would happen in, in that kind of a committee, but I see now from what the comments you've made tonight that it's doable and, and we do need each other to, to do this work. So thank you all for being here.
I too would like to thank all of you for being here. I, I think, as we're all well aware, there are so many efforts that are already underway. And one of the challenges, I think, in terms of going forward, as we think about how best to capture a community-wide effort is to not overwhelm people because so many, you know, I can, I can just tell you that in my inbox alone, there's probably about 25 different items that are coming from different directions, saying, here's a resource, here's an activity, here's an event, whatever. And so I think part of the challenge going forward is how do we maximize the incredible energy and effort and timeliness of this issue being on all of our minds? And at the same time, making it meaningful for real change and something that people can get a hold of in their own space and own terms in the community, but we also have that challenge internally for our own organization. And we, this select board has not yet had the opportunity to be fully briefed on what the town has been doing, but we look forward to that. And thank you as we seriously consider how we move forward here.
Well, I, I wouldn't worry too much about that. I think the best thing we could probably do is turn all these people loose and ask what resources they need in order to do the job. And I think there's plenty of motivation and plenty of knowledge and many, and a lot of dedication to this cause that we have right in this room. And like some of the other things that we do in this town, we should take advantage of, you know, the energy and the concern of our own citizens. Here we have them.
So as I went to the town composting site this weekend to drop off my grass clippings, I was heading out and I noticed people painting in plein air. And I thought, what's going on? There's at the, you know, essentially the town dump painted. And so I stopped and, and asked people, hey, what are you up to? And they were actually associated with this exhibit that's currently going on at Concord Art called Unseen. And they're painting the sites where African-Americans historically lived at the, at the periphery of Concord. So this is where they were living and at the time, and they were recreating in some sense that, that view. And to me, that, that is sort of some of that energy that is in town, that is going regardless of whatever we do. But I do think that there is a role for us as a board to play here and that it, it hopefully will continue to add to that energy as, as another stream. But one of the things, I know we weren't supposed to get into the details of the draft charts, but it is so fundamental to me that when I look at the draft charge and I look at the definition of diversity, it's a quite an expansive definition. It includes not just kind of the, the characteristics that are actually legally protected characteristics such as, you know, race or ethnicity or, or, you know, sex or, yeah, gender identity or, or orientation, sexual orientation. But it includes things like the belief system or even political perspective. And to me, I think that creates a danger that we could dilute the objective here that I don't know that while we do have an under-representation perhaps of Republicans in Concord, that, you know, it's necessarily, you know, and I don't want to trivialize the objective here. In fact, what I would like to do is to focus this effort because really, the most consequential aspect of diversity that's missing from Concord, the one that has the most historic and economic and other kinds of impacts is racial diversity. And really, when you think of the, you know, motive that's driving a lot of the effort here, it's really about, in, you know, dealing with the racial issues. We have certainly lots of work to do on many other fronts, but I'd really like to somehow find a way to zero in on, on that aspect as we move forward here and, and certainly try to, while not ignoring other aspects of diversity, I, I want, you know, hopefully to, to try to get at something very concrete and not feel like we're dissipating the energy. And then I have one final comment, which is, I actually think that diversity, equity, and inclusion as a committee should be prioritized. It, it, I think that it's much, it's very important. And yet you heard at the beginning of the meeting, the number of openings that we have that are unfilled currently in town committees and that we have just been obliged at town meeting to create two new committees. So we actually, you know, are, we have as an objective to reduce the number and streamline the effectiveness of our committees. And, and yet, you know, we have more and more of them. And it really hampers our ability in a way to initiate new, very important activities such as this. So I just, it's not really the focus of this room, but it is something that's really been on my mind that we, we constantly have these initiatives, we're seeking, you know, oversight of another committee with a new committee. And it, it, it's difficult. It's very difficult. Sorry, Terry?
Well, yeah, thank all of you for your comments.
Even Steven also.
Okay.
It's just very brief. I just want to touch on what just the town's efforts as well as they were referenced earlier. And I think, Susan, to your point, it's a journey. And it's a journey for all of us, and, and that's how we have been approaching it. And I think in terms of the town's focus, the work we're engaged in now is twofold. It's making sure that as an organization, we are welcoming to, to people of all backgrounds, but also as an employer, that we are similarly welcoming. And those, that's the focus of what we're doing for the organization because that is a impact to the community, how we interact and serve our, our residents. So I just wanted to touch on the work we're doing, even though, and we're right, and it is a journey and we are at the beginning, but I look forward to engaging further in discussion and working with the committee.
Right. When are we going to see the report of the consultant on, on, on the, on the contract gave to this, the organization to review the employment practices of the town?
I don't know. It was as simple as playing practices. Those, those leadership assessment, which you have that report.
Well, that's just the executive summary. So it must be the executive summary of something.
Of conversations. And so we have the, our, our next round, we have some sessions next week for training and, you know, there'll be additional reporting and reports after that.
Well, I understand that some points, it was a, some kind of report that you'll offer to Chair with the Chair of this committee. And then that offer was withdrawn. So I assume there was such a report.
The report that you received is basically the, that is the report.
We'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, this is one of the issues that we'll not have time to totally explore tonight. I think, as I said, there are many, many issues to explore. As many people have said, this is a journey. We have a lot of work to do. One of the main issues is going to be whether the Select Board creates a DEI commission. And then if we do, what will the charge be? Who will be on it? Et cetera, et cetera. So those are some very interesting comments that board members have made. Thank you. Any other questions now from board members before I turn to the public? Matt, if you want to start with the people who are live in the room, and then I'll do the Zoom people. How's that?
Yes. So if anybody who would like to speak from the public, this is your chance. If you do, please indicate you're interested by raising your hand or something. And then you could come forward to the microphone. We don't have anybody here who is indicating their interest. So I think we should move to the Zoom participants.
Okay. Anybody on Zoom who would like to comment or ask questions? I see Vivian Sang.
Hi, thank you. I just want to build up, build on.
Excuse me. Each person, please state your name and address for the record.
Vivian Sang, 1128 Old Marlboro Road. I want to build on two separate comments made by two members of the Select Board. First of all, the comment I think was Matt, who said that really political affiliation doesn't belong on this charter because, and, and that's, that's so very true. And it, it would actually bastardize the concept of diversity, equity, and inclusion to include political affiliation. And if, I don't know what the appropriate mechanism is to do this, but I would, you know, suggest that somebody move to strike that from what is being considered for the charter for the commission. Secondly, the other point made by the other member of the Select Board concerning, I hope this is not just one more thing imposed on our students. I think that is so very real, you know, simply increasing burdens on both educators and students without the appropriate resources. And in that vein, I want to advocate for proposed legislation, S365, H584, the legislation is called an Act Relative to Anti-Racism, Equity and Justice in Education, introduced by Senator Jason Lewis and Representative Erica Uterhosen and Representative Mika Elduado. Actually, we're holding a Zoom webinar on it this Thursday and I'm not quite sure how to disseminate that information to this particular audience, but those of you who know me or Erin can be in touch with us and we will, and also on Facebook. You can, you can find the webinar information on Facebook on the C A R E page. But what this calls for is the introduction of, you know, to summarize, the introduction of ethnic studies in the K through 12 curriculum through the creation of a commission to study and, and, and propose programs for youth and testing by, by different school districts and also a funding source to provide funds for curricular development and professional training. So, so, so I just want to echo that this is a charge that needs to be backed up by resources. And how we allocate our municipal and state budget is how we express our values and support what we truly believe in. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Vivian. And if you could, please touch base with Jeremy after the meeting and send him the information on that House bill. And then anybody who was interested can contact Jeremy. That's great.
Okay, great.
Who else on Zoom would like to speak? Sandy Nickel. You are on mute.
Sorry about that. I'm a member of the Human Rights Commission and and I live at.
Sandy, could, yeah, just give your name and address. Thank you.
Yeah, Sandy Nickel, 29 Concord Green, Concord, Mass.
Thank you.
And one of the things that that strikes me, I, I mean, I'm really excited about the fact that there's so many groups that are involved in, in doing things that I, that I wasn't necessarily aware of. But I also think that that frequently what happens is that I, I think that in many ways that those small groups are, or big groups, but with targeted areas are really a lot of where, where the action is and, and what gets done. And at the same time, I, I think what we're talking about trying to advance the, the issues and concerns of, of the whole community that, that it's also a good idea to have a, a coordinating body. And I, I'd really, I, I think you folks are, are, are in the right place to, to take on that responsibility and and it could be, you know, it can be a combination of people involved on that commission, but, but I, but I really think that that in order to, to sort of, like I said, to coordinate, to be able to, to at least be able to touch base and, and identify on an ongoing basis what people are doing and what other things are needed to be done, that, that the Board of Selectmen would be an important piece of that.
Thank you, Sandy. Other people from Zoom who wish to speak? Please raise your virtual or your real hand. I do not see anybody right now. Do you see anybody else, Jeremy?
There was nobody else raising their hand up here. So no.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to ask. Okay, so at this time, I would like to ask my colleagues on the select board, how you think we should proceed? I have a lot of possible ideas that I'm thinking about. Tanya, I hear, I'll call on you in a bit. One thing we could do is we could continue this discussion at a focused meeting. Another thing we could do is we could have a subcommittee of the select board to take a better look and start drafting a charge for us to consider at a future meeting. Another thing, we could vote tonight whether we want to have a commission or we don't, or whether we need more study or whatever. So I'd like to hear from the board members what you think our next steps should be.
Anybody want to start that conversation?
Well, I, I'll start. I, I think that we, from what we've heard tonight, and, and before this actually, that we would want to organize a DEI commission, and that's, but I'm, as far as getting our arms around it and doing it, I'm not sure. I think it might be helpful to have a couple members of the select board take on the, creating a charge. But it's something we're going to keep talking about frequently, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure how, of the process, but it, I'm convinced by what I've heard tonight that it's important to not just have the silos of, of effort that are going on in different faith groups and other groups in town.
Right. I think that if we do have a subcommittee on the select board, our job would be not to work in a vacuum, but to contact all the groups tonight and, and continue to get input from, from as many people and as diverse a group of people from the community as possible.
I mean, I think the, the way we deal with these things is by working on, the work of drafting a charge. That's the process, and that helps us to think things through. I would like to, I, I think that the charge that is proposed to us is way too detailed and way too long to be practical. And I think that there, it would be just as effective and probably more effective to have a shorter and more general charge. And maybe also more focused on the actual problems that we perceive to have in our own community, rather than the worldwide problems that seem to be addressed by the draft charges that have been presented with. So I think Matt had some great ideas about the charge, and I'd love to see him work on it.
Well, I, my, my first thoughts here is that I, while maybe a subcommittee makes sense for the actual drafting, that I think that that would have to be preceded by a general board discussion to get a sense of the board about the focus. Because, you know, while it's very difficult to edit by committee, it is very important to start off with the end in mind. And so I, that's what I would recommend, is that maybe not at tonight's meeting, but perhaps at, at the next meeting, that the committee member, that the board members come in prepared with their suggestions to drafting a charge. And maybe we don't even need a subcommittee, because maybe then one of the board members can be designated to write that draft charge using the inputs. And I think, by the way, I really appreciate the, the work that the league and others have done to get us a starting point. And then, you know, to, to work and get that then brought back to the, the board as a whole. That's what I would recommend. I don't know that a subcommittee will really help in, in something like this, as long as we have a good first discussion and a quick review of a draft after it's brought back.
I tend to agree that we need another discussion, and maybe it is a focus group effort. You know, some of our surrounding communities have taken, and I think we need to decide on what the priority is if we continue, go ahead with, with the commission. Clearly, we've got a community need for, and a hunger, if you will, for coordinating all the various efforts that are already going on. Some of our surrounding communities have focused specifically on members of the community of color and brought them together in a specific committee to really have some frank discussions about what some of their encounters have been, what are some of the issues, and then out of that have arisen policies for the municipality and the select board specifically to look at. So I think there's, you know, and it may be that we want a combination of these things, and so I think it's worthy of us giving some more thought to that and, and having a group discussion.
Yeah, I think our special role is really about the conduct of town government. You know, that while certainly we have some visibility in town as elected officials, you know, we really don't have authority over what Concord as a town does. And so while we want to create, we want to model the right behavior, I think that where the most important things can happen is if we really look carefully at how we conduct our business and whether it is inclusive and whether it does yield diversity in creating our, you know, when, when I hear about the, the trying to staff members of this commission, I think, well, shouldn't we be trying to staff all, all committees, you know, with those same sorts of ideas in mind? And so that, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking is, okay, how do we, how do we diversify town government as a process? And the community aspects of town government as well as the professional aspects of it.
I think that also we, there are other town government policies that we'll have to look I think one of the problems with diversifying town government, if the town is, I don't know what the percentage is, but if it's right now, for example, more than 90% white, then the few minority people are being asked to do double duty, triple duty on so many committees. And maybe what we also need to look at then is how do we recruit citizens of color to kind of live in Concord? What are some of our other policies, such as, I don't know, affordable housing, for example, or, or, you know, there are many other policies that we have to look at. So there's a lot to think about. So I guess, I'm hearing.
Every one of the things that, that a question continues to come up in my mind is that why communities like Acton and Lexington are far more diverse than Concord? And what is it that causes that difference?
Yeah.
It's not just economics. It's, it's, it's other factors that I think we don't really stay on.
Okay, right. Okay, so I think I'm hearing that the select board needs to have a discussion to really think through. Well, first of all, is, is, we have a consensus from everyone on the board, pretty much, that we're going to set up some type of a DEI committee or commission?
Sense of the board?
Sense of the board.
Yeah, yeah, are you pro?
I am. I'm sorry, what is it, are you having a sense of the meeting?
A sense of the meeting of whether you're in favor of setting up such a commission.
Pursuing the idea of doing that, I think, obviously something.
I think all of us are.
Right. Okay, so. So, Linda, yes?
If I may interject, while we have the school representatives here, I know that they've been at this for a while now, even prior to hiring the DEI new coordinator. And I'm wondering if it would be helpful, while we have their presence, to just talk a little bit about some of the initial steps they took on this effort?
Sure, that's a good idea.
Sure. I'll get started, Andrew, you can hop in at any point. You know, at the early days, it really, and this was a few years ago, really just trying to get the conversation started. We, we've done book groups and, you know, picked some real texts that would start conversations. There's a number of, a number of titles out there that would lend to that. We brought in speakers that would start to allow the teachers to get on to the same pages, and then just tried to set up environments where we could start to listen. And I would say that was the later part of those last few years. The early parts were just starting to set the stage and get a dialogue going. So I don't think there's a wrong starting place. I think you've got to build some foundation, and I've talked about this with Core, and certainly Andrew, with the staff and teachers, you've got to build that foundation that it's safe enough that you can set a stage for the real feedback you need to hear, which you heard a bit of that tonight. And that's the only way we get better. So that's my initial thought, is getting that common language enough that we're all starting to have the same conversation, and then can really talk on the hard things. It gets really hard, that part I need to say out loud. It gets really hard. Everyone needs to be open to the feedback. We need a safe environment to hear the feedback. And there'll be naysayers, we hear from them. On occasion, there'll be naysayers, and you have to believe the work is that important and believe there's, there's an outcome worth, worth struggling through. We believe that strongly, and I can tell everyone here does. So I think your conversations are your starting point, whatever tool you use to get them started.
Thank you, that's helpful. The other question I would direct to you is, and maybe you've done this later in the process with the help of your consultant, but my understanding was that you've reached out to other, for other methods for recruitment efforts?
Andrew, do you want to talk on that a little bit, some of the tools we started to use?
Absolutely. Linda, in terms of hiring?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, so one of the areas that we've expanded on is partnering with NEMNET, which is the New England Minority Network. And we have certainly been successful in our recruiting efforts, especially this year. Almost every single one of our job postings have gone through NEMNET, and we've, we've received back some great candidates, some of which I believe we actually hired for this upcoming school year. So I think, you know, from our, you know, from the school standpoint, you know, we've, we've sort of changed our sort of practices over the last years in terms of hiring and really gotten creative. And in addition to that, one of the initiatives we did this year, this past school year, is we held a focus group where we invited all of our, well, not all, but a number of our current employees of color. We invited them all into a focus group to hear about their experiences in our school district, and that was extremely eye opening. And part of that conversation, again, very difficult conversation, however, you know, what resulted out of that, you will hear in the coming school year, is a new initiative that we're hoping to, to adopt this coming school year. And it's all about sort of supporting, again, supporting our employees of color in our district. But again, you know, the conversations we've had within the last three or four years, they have been extremely difficult, but I think based on the effort and the progress that we've made, we have seen, we have seen some great results in terms of our hiring and, and just in general, in terms of, in terms of how we market our, our school district to the wider sort of candidate pool here in Massachusetts and abroad, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are very helpful comments. We can learn a lot from the school efforts. We're going to run out of time pretty soon. I said I would call on Tanya, if you have a free comment, Tanya?
Thanks, thanks. Let's see. I'm going to echo. I have to, yeah, something.
Uh-oh, Tanya, we're having trouble hearing you with the.
Did you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about all that. So, first of all, I, I was a part of the DEI committee, I took part in many of the discussions, and I reassure you that a lot of good thinking and effort and soul searching, as well as reports from people who have experienced prejudice in their lives, including biracial families, they have all gone into this preparation of this charge. So I urge you to trust a lot of what it says in there. The second thing is, I agree with what Terry's saying, that it may be kind of burdening minority communities to come and serve on this committee, and, and it's really the choice of individuals. And it is true, in my experience, that while some of my friends of color have been very willing to speak to white groups about racial justice and their experiences, others have said that it is up to white people to look into their souls, in fact, to ask, why have I, why is this an issue in the first place? What have I done that has created this issue? So my point being that, all the discussions, all the conversations are important. So let's not assume that, that, let's not kind of make the mistake of assigning people to intentions or groups, especially people of color, saying, oh, they must want to talk to us, or they probably, we need to, you know, if, if, all the conversations are important. And, and lastly, about the, some of the qualities that, like Matt said, were legally protected anyway, I'm not talking about political affiliation as much, although I'm sure, depending on what political views some people have, there may be, you know, you know, anyway, that's not my point. It is important to nevertheless realize that even legally protected, that this is not about legal protection. I mean, people of color are as legally protected as anybody else on paper. This is about what happens. Therefore, let's not just write the details off all of them. For example, the accent one, I think, for example, is something that I have lived with. And as I wrote in my letter to you, that's nothing compared to how I grew up in the, in my home country as a, as a silenced minority member. So not everything is always visible, let's be open, I'm just saying, please trust the charge that was prepared by the legal women voters DEI commission, because this was a very focused commission with people who were really, who had their hearts focused on this issue, and were very serious about it. It wasn't like keeping track of all the other issues we have in Concord about policy or town government. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tanya. I do agree with you, there are many, many good ideas. The charge from the league is very well thought out, and we'll have to look very carefully at all of that. I also just want to clarify that if any person of color wants to join the DEI commission, I would be thrilled. I just don't want to have them feel more obligated than a white person. Like Laurie Hunter said, this is going to be very difficult for all of us. So, okay, so to wrap this item up for tonight, I guess what I'm hearing from the board is that we are going to proceed with a commission, we need to figure out how to write a charge. I'm kind of of two minds, one is we could continue this discussion at a focused meeting, or the other way to do it is if each member wants to jot down some ideas from what from what you think, from what you've heard tonight, from the league's charge, and send them off to one person. Possibly Matt would volunteer to receive all of the comments. I don't know. But that might get our discussion moving quicker. So let's pick one of those two scenarios. Which way do you guys want to do it?
I was going to suggest something a little in between, which was just that we don't have to have a whole focus meeting on this next time, but that if people come in with their, having prepared some of their input, we have it just as a topic on the agenda, we give it maybe half an hour at the most, where each of the members could express their point of view. We can have a little bit of conversation about that, so we can really socialize and see whether we have a sense of consensus. Then we can. Yeah. Okay.
Henry, Susan and Linda, do you think that's a good way to proceed, or do you want to do something different?
Sounds great. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, he nodded.
It's really interesting watching the select board on Zoom. You guys are got big little dots. It's unbelievable. Okay. Thanks to everybody for putting in the time and energy into this first of many meetings. And we'll continue the select board dialogue at our next meeting, which is August 9th. Each select board member come in with some ideas. And I'm sure we'll be talking to all of you from the community many times. Thanks again for participating.
And so like, you can leave at this point, and if you are planning to leave, this would be a great moment. When we start our next topic, we want to minimize disruption. Thank you very much for your time. We're just going to give about two minutes now for changes in regard.
How many people do we actually have live? We have forty-eight people on Zoom. How many people do we?
I'd say we had another thirty to forty here.
Excellent, thanks, everybody. Okay, um, we are going to move on now to our next item, a review of the broadband outage. And I'd like to just say what the process will be tonight for this section of the meeting. First of all, we will have representatives from CMLP give a brief update on what they've learned with the after action report. And then the select board will have questions and comments. And I'm going to ask everyone who comments, again, to be brief and to polite, to, you know, we agree that mistakes have been made and now it's time to stop blaming each other and really focus on moving forward. I appreciate in the after action report, there's a lot of honesty and candor. For example, stating that communication during this incident was inadequate at every level. I think that's very helpful, acknowledge it. And now we need to figure out how to move on in a positive way. So I want everyone to be brief and keep the conversation positive.
Can I ask one question? And that is the report that we got that came out of the light board letter. Who wrote that report?
Right, so, okay, that's a good segue, Henry. We have here with us several people from CMLP. I see Wendy Rebelli, who is chair. I see Alice Kaufman on the board. I see Jason Bolger, our IT director. And I think there are probably some other people from CMLP. Who would like to begin?
Terry, I can begin.
Okay.
So to your question, Henry, it was prepared jointly by our broadband manager and our light plant director, Dave Wood, and Greg Marsnick, and with assistance from Jason Bolger as well. So that was prepared by town staff that are, that are involved in our broadband. So and I think we, I think Terry is right, our, we wanted to be as detailed as we possibly could be. And we wanted to let the community know that we, it was, it was important for us to understand what happened and to be honest about what happened and to acknowledge where things went badly, but also set the stage for moving forward and acknowledge that we are going to be a much stronger entity as a result of all this and to let the community know that we're going to hold ourselves and our, our partners, our vendors accountable for, for this, both for what happened and for, for our future expectations.
So I didn't. What I wanted to say about that before is I thought it was extremely well done. It was very frank. I don't think there was anything in it that seemed to be self-serving. It was called generally the unvaried truth. You never can know what truth is, but the unvaried truth, but it was well-written. And you, I almost wonder how a group of people who could produce a report like that could have been involved in such a disaster.
Well, I appreciate the feedback. I'll assume that last question was rhetorical.
In some sense, they're all rhetorical.
So I guess what I would say is, if the, for the benefit of the people who didn't see the report, I'd be happy to invite Greg, Dave or Jason to offer their comments, basically give a two-minute version of what's in the report first.
My name's Greg Marsnick, the director of broadband for the Town of Concord, Massachusetts. Yeah, so we, I'd say first, I do want to just say again that we totally apologize. I don't know how to say it, it stops, the buck stops with my oversight of it. And I want to just publicly thank the broadband team, our, our customer service staff, who just went way out of, way above and took a lot of heat. So I just want to publicly make that statement. I'd say the second big thing we took out of this was we heard loud and clear from the public on our communication efforts. We have absolutely addressed those in, in our documents that we are producing. And, and we do apologize to the public for the stress and anxiety that this outage created. I think another thing that really came to light is we're learning very quickly how much we live independent on the internet. I think when probably Concord Broadband was conceived, when it was first implemented, everybody still had a Verizon telephone. In this case, I heard from many people, I spoke to well over a hundred residents and they, you know, really did express how important Concord, how important the internet is, how much they depend on it for either their livelihoods, for health for many people. And, and so we truly take that to heart and truly are moving forward to make sure that we can prevent that and anything even close to this never happen again. I'm just going to touch on a few highlights to say is why, I think, why we were, where we were, why we're here and why we, how we got there. I personally started for the Town of Concord on March 9th, 2020. As we all know, March 13th, the World Health Organization declared a pandemic. And on the 13th, the town and the state were now in a status of how to react to this pandemic. And the entire staff, the entire town employees had to, how to learn now how to function within this time. Our focus, even as a broadband team, because we did put moratorium, as people know, on the installs, our focus really was to assist the town. And we used our expertise and our knowledge to work, you know, with expanding the wireless communications, COVID tents, supporting the fire department, police department, as everybody had to expand and learn how to function in a totally new way than has ever been done before. The, what I also came on, and again, note, and let me first say this, these are not excuses, these are explanations, I think, of how we ended up where we were. The, our, when I came on, we had one network engineer and three technicians. This issue was a network issue. And so, but during that time, our network engineer at the time, Dan Leahy, was focused again, almost 100% of his time was on the new services, the new applications and the new, all the issues of moving personnel and trying to focus on how people could remote, work remotely and all those things. So he was, you know, up to his ankles and alligators throughout the many first, probably six, six, you know, first six to eight months, strictly focusing on supporting this town and its, its operations and to, to deal through the COVID pandemic. Unfortunately, and unfortunately, Dan was a good guy, liked Dan a lot. He took the job with it in every town. And it was kind of a sudden thing to us, fast forwarding now about, you know, almost over, over a year. And so we were now in between with our new hire. We rushed to hire a new engineer. Unfortunately, there wasn't an overlap. Dan's transition out and the new engineer's transition in were completely separate by a few weeks. Dan was kind enough to come and spend a couple hours in an afternoon with us to give the new engineer a, I'll say a bird's eye view of the network, but surely not an intimate understanding of all the nuances within that network. The network is a complex network. And the new engineer being forced into this situation with no fault of his, to deal with something of this level with having less than three months employment here. And I assure you that it wasn't a lack of industry knowledge, but a lack of intimate knowledge of the complexity of our town network at the time and when it happened. I am very confident that if he had been here a year, this outage would have been a lot, quarter of the time, maybe not. You know, it was just that he was, as things were happening, he had, and cascading, he had to learn on the fly. So with that said, I'm going to just express a few things that we've done already and in the process of doing. So accord network improvement, and that was one of our issues. But just for core network, we're just reviewing all the devices, latest software firmware versions. We're talking to the vendors. We're reviewing any of the end-of-life documentation and any vulnerabilities that could exist on the network today. And we're redesigning the core to meet more of today's, what the internet needs today, people and the demands. We are presenting a few designs to outside vendors. And we're planning on deploying over the next probably six months to, to get to a point where we have a more redundant, more resilient network. Again, I think when Concord Broadband first was designed and put, it was there for a different time. It worked well, it was designed great, it was, it ran stable. But I think now as we're seeing what we went through, we need more redundancy built in and more resilience built into the network to meet the needs, because people's lives literally could depend on the internet today. We've, we've had a full review with Calix. So just to understand, there's functions of our, our network, but Calix is the actual network that, that serves out the broadband application to the residents. As the manufacturer, we had them in, they went through a full review. We're in the process of hiring their pro services to come in and to help us. It's an industry term called dirty switches. It's just to clean up all the stuff that isn't being used today. It is not a, it's kind of a neutral term, it's not such a negative term. But with all, all networks, with all devices, over time, things get used. Things don't get erased, because when they're not being used, and we just feel it's a good time, obviously, from this to start anew and just start fresh. So we're bringing them in to help us with that. They're also going to bring us up to any latest revisions. We're not far behind really in that case in their observations, but we're just, might as well bring everything and start with one clean platform. We've already agreed with them also to do a annual deep dive. So every year, we will have a real formal review and document how we're going to move forward each year to support the new and future residents and customers. Let's see, personnel updates. So we've, we got both positions. We're hiring a new, our second network engineer to support our current network engineer and a fourth technician. They were already in the works theoretically. COVID again, pandemic, things changed. But those two postings are going to be going up this week, been approved and will be going up immediately. And we're hoping to get a second network engineer and a fourth field technician on board. And the fourth technician on board is really something, again, we had in the sites too, because we knew we were going to have a backlog with, with the install, with it. Yes, so with installs, so that's the biggest, one of the biggest reasons we're going forward with that. And physical plant improvement, we have already started a project to do an audit on all the fiber. We have all the open fiber that's there, we know there's some compromise. Again, that's just things that happen over time. So we're doing a full audit on all the open fiber. So we will know and have a plan of action when we know, like, we, terminology is hops. When we know from each hop on our fiber ring, we will know immediately what works, what doesn't. So we're not searching during the outage. We know that strand of fiber is clean and that strand of fiber can be used immediately if we have a fiber break on another segment. We've also, we've started a incident recovery and communication plan. Our communication plan at this moment is within our incident recovery plan. Basically, we are creating a full document, our draft is done, a full document on each step, depending on the severity of the outage, who those players are within each level of the severity, and then name those players and processes that will automatically happen when an outage occurs. Though we have a incident recovery team, which is basically from my level down. So that, these are the people who will actually be the hands and feet on the street when things happen, whether it be a physical break or a network issue. And then we're going to name the, an incident management team, which would go from the assistant director, Director Dave Woods, town manager, you know, within the town, so that we're keeping them within communications. They will be contacted depending again on the severity. And it'll be a specific plan and who's involved on certain types of outages and issues.
Could you comment on the budgetary issues that are involved in this? I know the light plant is a, is a revolving fund, is it not? And so all the funds to accomplish this come out of the light. And so all the funds to accomplish this come out of the light plan fund? Or does some of it come from the town? And is there are there any budgetary constraints on your implementing? All of the all of the curative issues that are that are you know, that are outlined in your in your report.
Yeah. So we have, we are in the process right now of creating a couple of designs. With those designs, we will then have a cost. And with that, we will then, of course, have a budgetary item.
Well, I think if I may say, I'd ask Dave to right hand the question because he oversees the light plant budget as well as the broadband. I asked Dave Woods to answer that question.
And before Dave speaks, I'd just like to ask select board members, hold your questions. Let's let the presentation all the all the people from CMLP present and then the board will have a chance to ask questions. Thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
Dave Wood, the director of the light plant. Each year we do our budgets. It's an annual thing on the calendar year. We're going to pull together, we are pulling together the list of items that are, you know, up for replacement. And then basically we'll bring that to the light board. We didn't budget for this for this year. So we're going to have to take a look at the numbers and see where it falls. But ultimately, we do have cash reserves to do these sort of things. It's the only thing is it's going to be some big ticket items, I think, when we look at it and we're going to have to value, you know, do we do it this year? Do we do it next year and prioritize what the most important pieces are to do now and then as we move forward?
Do we have other speakers? I think we may be done, Terry, with the speakers from the
All right. Is there anyone else from the light plant? Okay, I'd like to ask a few questions and then other board members. So Greg, you mentioned an incident recovery team. What will happen if that if those team members are on vacation or it's a weekend or the middle of the night? Is there a backup recovery team?
Good question. So in the plan, I actually have that specified with vacations, illness, unexpected absences, and we have a number of contractors that we work with now, one being Phoenix is a contractor that helps us when we have major storm damage. Usually when we're looking now, we have to pull, you know, big segments of fiber opposed to just, you know, a small segment that happens from either home to the street or a short section like I know one of us, we had a squirrel chew, you know, as we call it, the famous squirrel chew and and our team is more than capable of fixing that within a reasonable amount of time, you know. So but we do have in our plan that exact, we're going to detail that for
Great, thank you. My next question is in the after action report, it talks about the vendor for level one broadband support. I'm not sure if this was net integrity or a different vendor.
That is correct. It's net integrity.
Okay. And in the report, it said that there was inconsistent messaging and they have insufficient staff and insufficient phone lines. So how is this situation going to be improved going forward?
So where's I I've contacted them. We have a meeting, we're going to be setting up a meeting to go over the details of their staffing. We were really blindsided ourselves with the staffing levels. We were not we were told, well, I was under the impression they had a lot more people in their call center than they do. They they had or at least had dedicated to us. And so we are in the process of figuring out, you know, how they're going to resolve those issues. And if they can't give us a quality answer, then I think then we have to make decisions ourselves.
Right. Like the contract with them should specify in some way what their resources will be that they're going to devote to conquer.
Yes.
Right. Okay. And then on on the town side, how will the communication be improved between the broadband staff and the CMLP customer service staff?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the?
Oh, yes. One of the issues that was stated in the report and and I personally had experience with this is that we need to improve communication between the broadband staff and the CMLP customer service staff. For example, there's two different phone numbers and we were calling both of them and getting two different stories. So how will all of that be improved?
So quinsly Wednesday morning, I'm going to be meeting with that the CSR staff and we are going to go over. We're really going to try and look at the whole scenario and figure out how we could have communicated better. You know, during during the outage, of course, and how we can help them to answer questions more easily and making sure we're providing them with with answers that they can give to the residents and to the customers.
Great. And backup people for vacations and weekends and all of that. Right. Okay. And then my last question is, I'd like, I know other board members have questions, but I'd just like to request that since this is an ongoing effort and you've made a very good start with this report, but there's still a few questions outstanding and obviously you want to go back to the light board, you want to prioritize things and that at some point in the next few months, I'd like to request it. You come back one more time with another update.
We will do so. Thank you.
So I'd like to turn to questions from the
Yeah, Linda was first, I think.
So thank you all for the report. I to agree, seemed to be forthright and pretty detailed, which I appreciate. Mike, I have questions in a couple of different categories and one has to do with communication with our customers. And another category really has to do with timing of the, as you establish the priorities and the timing and our vulnerability while you're taking the time to implement some of the steps that you suggested you're going to take. So if I could start with the communication. Clearly, you already mentioned you've talked over 100 customers. They are, I assume they have a received written communication. I know that they know they're getting a 25% bill credit. Are there other things in terms that you formally have done in terms of the communication?
So as far as my communication with the residents I've spoken with, they either initiated the conversation with me via email or a phone call. And that's my communications with with them and had some very positive and conversations, I'd say almost, I'd say really 95% of them were very positive and very supportive.
Yeah. So there's no, no, been no general letter or something that went out to all the customers or particularly all the customers?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so the other thing it has to do with, I guess, our vulnerability while you're working out, getting all the resources in place, working with the vendors. You know, reworking the network and all the things that you've talked about doing. Just sort of the degree of vulnerability we have at this point and 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 what the plan is to deal with that.
So just to state, the 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 network is very stable. The issue that happened was not a like the network was ready to fall apart and the wheels were going to fall off. That is not at all what happened. The then the network isn't vulnerable right now or today. What we're concerned about is the level of that's right word, the 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 level of quality control, whereas we don't want to see anything be able to take down the network. So right now with the few issues that that we're looking into and most of them are age of anything. It's mostly to age of equipment and things like that. Technology speed with with technology comes speed and performance. And we are projecting and looking to design this so that towns and the broadband network will have the speed and performance and reliability it needs for the next five, six, seven, eight years.
So it sounds like you're less worried in the short term and that you can plan the resilience in the system going forward.
Absolutely.
On your own terms.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, there was a question of redundancy and I'm wondering, do we have that right now or is that?
Yes, there there is a and like with all things, redundancy is a, it's a moving target. The the design was very redundant for what for where it was. I'd say that the there were some, like I said, aging servers, things like that 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 we're going after first. These things happen in networks, you know, you just things become what they call end of life.
Sure.
And so we are strategically looking at the and going down, you know, pecking order, what our priorities are and what we want to change and 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 fortify. But those things have already been happening on the 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 network side and with patches and looking with other vendors for upgrades and, you know, things like that, that you know, we're maybe behind for a couple of versions and every version brings with it more fortification and more resilience.
Okay. And how how does this impact the backlog and the new customer installs at this point? And have we lost customers?
We have lost some customers. I honestly don't have that number to say we've lost customers specifically due to the outage. But I will say we definitely had unhappy customers. And I don't want to even venture the guess. I don't want to venture to guess at the moment what was directly caused by the outage, but
So maybe in the follow up report.
Yes, absolutely. We can, we can do that.
So in the impact on going forward with the installs?
No impact on the 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 network has the capacity right now and the network has the stability to move forward. So we are absolutely, those are our two primary focuses right now. We are have been engaged with customers and started to walk through is what we call. I'm engaged with trying to get a vendor to support us on the outside plant, which would be any kind of cabling fibering fiber to the home. And then our team is going to focus on walkthroughs and the actual installation of the residence services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I I had a question and it will probably demonstrate my lack of understanding of a lot of this, but the process that's going on whereby there's been a migration of emails and all and information from servers onto is it Microsoft 360? Is that process affected by the out? I mean, is that had of anything to do with what happened?
No, no, does not. No, not at all. Two totally separate things.
Okay.
Okay, so I will add my voice to those that admire the frank assessment in the report. I actually thought it's that worried. I, you know, a report like that, it's it's very hard to write, of course, but when you read it, it just definitely helps restore trust and and, you know, clears the air so that you can get moving again. And so I really appreciate that. The thing that I was struck by is just the sheer number of systems that were either out of obsolete, you know, either the hardware is obsolete or software is out of support or that maybe patches were behind that. You know, it seems like there wasn't really kind of an operational focus on keeping things up to to date. I don't know, even if the original architecture of the system may have been sound or not, that that did seem like there wasn't a steady follow through. And it sounds like now you're going through a process of you know, figuring all that out, cleaning all that up. But I guess I'm more interested in the ongoing process to assure that continues, you know, because it's it's one thing to rally and and get everything cleaned up, but then if it just sits there goes another few years that you can end up the same spot again.
No, that that's correct. And I think that we we do have a a maintenance program that we're putting in place, not only for the, yeah, for the outside plant like the fiber. That's also will include the networking side. I I think the biggest challenge was resources in the past year, obviously. And then the one resource we did have who could have been taking care of or on top of all those little nuances that we're talking about firmware updates, etc. Was so focused on.
There's like a discipline called like asset lifecycle map.
Yes.
Right. And I I'm sure that they should be familiar with this also from the broader light plant operations that, you know, there is a there's just a discipline and their systems that can support these kinds of efforts on an ongoing basis.
Jason, Jason, I think it was one of the things that he helps helped contribute during this issue. I was doing a lot of research on this. So Jason, if you want to touch on it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that in general, we we have a hardware replacement program, but I've seen firsthand how difficult it can be to both address the day to day issues that pop up and then also do resource planning and upgrade planning. So I think that really the the reason that we are behind on some of those pieces of equipment, updating them is because of the lack of the second network engineer position not being filled. So once we do get that second network engineer in place, I'm confident that they'll have the bandwidth to sort of, you know, address the day to day issues like Greg mentioned, you know, town meeting, we need new wireless infrastructure or this building, we need to help rewire the townhouse. You know, when you spend a lot of time doing projects like that, you then, you know, fall behind on the other maintenance. But we do have a way to track our inventory and our hardware in terms of release dates for firmware and how old equipment is. So that will help us as we track this equipment.
Okay. And then I guess one other angle on this altogether, you know, because you were saying that the office 365 project is very different project, but there is a thematic thing here, which is, you know, the outsourcing of the the software aspects. You have the physical assets here in town, clearly the physical network, all of that, but that perhaps the administration of the network. The service, the, you know, we already do outsource some of the customer service, but if it was all integrated as a as an outsourced operation, that's an interesting model. And it sounds like a model that some other municipalities have used. Now we're investing in new employees. Perhaps the trains already left the station on this, but it does sound like a worthy investigation at least of like, okay, in sourcing versus outsourcing of those aspects of the system. Because there are other municipalities that have done that and they can get maybe economies of scale out of it.
I think if I touch on that, because the the broadband, the discussions about filling positions that we have internally is the same with every department in terms of in sourcing versus outsourcing. And I think one of the things that Concord is very fortunate to have is the ability to support a work, an organization and a workforce that can provide a wide variety and a great depth of service. But we also need to be supplemented with, you know, vendor support. And so we have, I guess, the best of both worlds where we can we can procure good vendor support, but also have in-house people that really know our network and not rely on contracted vendors, because as we just saw with an integrity issue, sometimes you you don't really know that you're not going to get what you pay for until it's too late. And so having that balance is important and provides, I think, the optimal service level.
But I mean, it gets down to something as simple as like a DHCP server that, you know, you don't have to have one. You could have a contracted one. Somebody else could have one, just the same way as we used to have a Microsoft Office Server. And, you know, it brings with it certain vulnerabilities and, you know, and also potentially costs. So it's those are the kinds of trade offs that I really am talking about.
Sure. Can I touch on this just for a brief second? What I wanted to add to this is that one of the processes that we hope to change is the transparency that goes along with some of these decisions. Greg mentioned before the priorities and the prioritization of some of these projects. And it's our goal that at regular light board meetings, we bring these projects forward for discussion, not just this is what we did last month, but this is what we're planning to do and get input on that because I do think that with conversations about in sourcing versus outsourcing or internal support versus external support. I think there is a conversation to be had and not only does it build trust for our customers, but it also helps the light board and the select board have a better understanding of the operations and also have a voice in what level of risk. and also have a voice in what level of risk, you know, we're comfortable accepting. I think with a lot of these redundancies and resilience, you're going to see a price tag. And I think it's really important for the decision to be made in the open and with the public's input. And I think it would be a disservice to just have a couple of people say, well, that sounds too expensive. I think it's worth it to explore every avenue and then present that to people and say, this is what we're doing and what we think is sound and what, you know, the best practice is and what our vendors recommend. Does that sound good to you? So I think that we're trying to put that process at the heart of what we're doing.
That's fantastic, Jason. I'm really happy to hear that. I think that will be a huge improvement and definitely build trust. And I have a related question, which is on this second network engineer, which seems like a real critical position. I noticed that the posting started in April and it's finally being advertised now. I guess I want to know what you guys, the timeframe. Probably very difficult to recruit a talented IT person right now. How long do you think it will take us to get the approximately? Is this a six-month process, for example, or what do you think? Maybe it's a question for Dave. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So usually when we go through the recruitment process, best case scenario is three months and that's if you're pushing it along. We have, we have been successful in less than that, but it's usually three months for us. One other thing I wanted to clarify is earlier you asked about communication with the customers. Our customer service team did reach out to our customers and we also put a Twitter message out about the credit. So we didn't, it wasn't just nothing. We, we did communicate with them.
Absolutely. I thought the customer service team was fantastic. The problem was the other phone line, which I think might have been the integrity phone line and just sort of customers not knowing which line was which. And, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, to get in a little bit more of the details of the integrity issue, they had three people answering the phones and they had six lines each. So that's eighteen phones and you know how quickly those are going to fill up and then people are getting bumped out. And so that's, that's kind of some of the details of the issues we had with them that we're going to be working through. But that's not, that's not acceptable in terms of, you know, managing an emergency.
That, that is.
An action item for sure for us. We recognize that and, and that's just not acceptable.
At least have the opportunity to get it.
Correct.
Right. Okay, are there any more questions from select board? I think we're ready for questions from the public. And I want to again remind people to be brief. We're starting to run kind of long on this item. We have a lot more business to do after this, but we do want the public to be able to ask questions and comment. Matt, do you see any people live?
Well, actually, I would ask Jeremy. Jeremy, do you see any? I'm not seeing, oh, here we go. We were somebody. Yeah.
Are you, okay. Run Zoom people, okay.
Lois Suarez, three four Everett Street apartment ten B, not a customer of broadband because it's not available in my neighborhood. Learning that you have job openings and in the spirit of the discussion earlier this evening, I'd appreciate a commitment from the broadband light plant hiring team to reach out to recruit from a field of diverse candidates, much like the school has done. Additionally, to look at diversity, equity, inclusion in your choice of vendors also.
Thank you, Lois.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from the people attending on Zoom?
I see Bill Seaver. Do you want to unmute yourself and ask a question?
I'm unmuted. Bill Saber, two nine four, the Valley Road Concord. I feel you are doing all the things I would do for a physical network. I'm not sure your focus on a logical network is that extensive. And I guess I want to raise that question. I'll happily talk with anybody who wants to talk with me. My phone number is nine seven eight five oh five five three six nine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Other questions from the people attending virtually? Please raise your hand or your virtual hand. I am not seeing anybody right now.
Yeah, Terry, no one is blocking off mine. So if you do have a question, feel free to unmute yourself and ask a question or use the right hand picture.
Okay, I think seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Which is the writing of the charge for the article forty-one. Let me see exactly what we're calling it. Of course, I don't have that. The fiber broadband completion committee. Okay, so we have several people with us today on this. And I had asked the petitioner, Gail Hire, as well as some other citizens who are interested, as well as members of CMLP and Carlin Reed from the PEG Access to send input on this charge. I then tried to collect everyone's comments into one draft, which is in the select board packet beginning on page fifty-two. And what I'd like to do tonight is take about fifteen minutes and see how far we can get with that charge. See if we have agreement or we need to go back and do more work. So if I could just get that packet in front of me. Of course, I don't have it in front of me. Okay.
Terry, you want me to do a screen share?
That would be great. Thank you, Johnny. Okay, so in the packet, we have two versions of this, the clean version and the marked up version. So just to explain, the first step was I just took all the text from article forty-one in the narrative and just pasted it into this format. Gail hired then went through and made a number of changes after consulting a number of you. And now what you see is additional comments from Gail, members of CMLP and others. So someone from CMLP in section A, what we'll do is we'll go to each section. So in section A, I think we're pretty much in agreement. One person commented that they want to use Jason or Greg's assessment of the facts as far as whether it's five percent of the resident parcels or seven percent. I think that might be a good idea. Let's see, can you scroll down a little bit further, Jeremy, to the next?
Yeah, I'm trying to make it a little bigger.
Right, that looks good, okay. Okay, there's that part where you see five percent crossed out and seven percent, you know, maybe we don't even specify a percent. We just see remaining town streets. Can you scroll down to the remainder of this section A? Keep going, until we finish with section A. Okay, great. That's the end of it. All right. Um, are there any comments from the board, the select board members on section A? Do you think we're basically in agreement here?
I would just say that this statement that's been added, fiber build-out has to be completed to the remaining about quarter of the residents. Perhaps also some businesses not yet served. Doesn't seem necessary to charge. Assertive, I'd say in style.
I see it, yeah, okay.
I just don't think it's necessary.
Okay. That's a good comment. We could tone that down or eliminate that sentence. Other comments from the select?
Charge is very long, so eliminated sentences.
Okay. Any other comments on section A, the purpose? Okay, let's go to section.
I like your comment as well as just eliminating the specific percentage and just saying, do the streets not serve?
Okay, the membership. Now, I'd like to make a comment about.
My comment on the membership is that the very first bullet, I don't think we can do for their designated need because the town meeting voted saying that it was a member of the select board, I mean, of the, of the light board. So we can't change what town meeting voted.
Okay, also, I'd like to comment before I get to that. Almost everybody commented that we're not going to be finished with this by February first. However, I have the same comment as Matt, the town meeting voted that it has a six-month term. So I think the way that we can solve this is, as several people suggested, this committee's charge will run until February first, twenty twenty-two, and then the select board will probably have to take action to extend it, create another committee or something. But we, everyone agrees it's maybe too short to finish the whole job, but we can't change it because it was voted that way.
Is that also the case about committee versus task force? Because when I think of this, time-limited activity with an express deliverable, that task force certainly sounds more like the type of thing that we're talking about.
I agree with that. Also, in the, in the membership, I added in, after seeing some comments from several people, one member from a multi-dwelling, multi-unit or homeowners association. I thought that was a good comment because of all, a lot of residents who are not being served. And the problem is not well-understood. There seems to be technical and political problems and it needs to be researched. That, however, would change it from additional citizens at large to two additional citizens at large. And perhaps we would give preference to some of the groups that were mentioned, such as the arts and digital media community, representatives of the older population, representatives of lower-income populations and students. And then at the end, there is some disagreement about whether or not to add the finance committee as a liaison. I personally think they should be added. We're talking about millions of dollars here, possibly ten to twenty million dollars. And I know the chair of the finance committee has appointed a liaison who is eager to observe and, and pay attention to this effort.
So why do we have to? There we go. Linda was about to say, why, why do we have to say that in the charge? I mean, it's up to the finance committee if they want to have a, let's say a liaison, and they have anyway. So why bother to put that to charge?
Okay, can take that out. Other comments on the membership section?
I, I like that, that you put in someone representing a multifamily dwelling, since that's, that's one of the big holes in service. So. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. All right, what do you think about this part where it says two additional citizens at large with preference given to and little sport groups? Is that something we want to have in there?
I don't think it's necessary, but, you know, I mean, I do think we need citizen members, but I don't know that those specific communities are, you know, when we talk about making it down the last few streets. I think that it's not that there are particular streets that are only students or only older people that are, you know, that I think that you've really zoomed in on the main issue, which is multi-dwelling unit in addition to just simply getting out to the rest of the, the town. So I guess that's why I was, I, I didn't really get why those groups would have a special perspective on this particular charge.
Okay, so it sounds like we have.
What was your thinking? Why was it that you thought?
These comments that I received from the various groups that I listed. One, one person wants arts and digital media community, one other person, you know, these are just different. This, this draft here includes ideas from many segments of the community, so.
I mean, if it was billing practices or, I don't know.
I think it'd be better to, I agree with Matt to leave it more broad, broad, because one of the things we want to do is to fill all the positions on the committee and the other is that I think one of the ideas is to draw on residents who have particular expertise in that area and they may not be in any of these groups, but we wouldn't want to not include them.
Okay, that's a very good point. So it sounds like we might have a consensus that the membership will be one member of the light board, not take out the designated need, one member from the business community, one member from the real estate community, one member from multi-unit dwellings or homeowners association, one member of PEG Access and two additional citizens at large, period.
That's good.
Okay, excellent. And now we are on to the duties and responsibilities. And this is the hardest section. This part at the bottom where it says the committee shall hold at least one public hearing, may conduct service, that I moved from another place. It seemed to me that it belongs in duties and responsibility. So this is where I'm, I, I took the exact text from the other version and moved it over here. And.
There's, there's another sentence here where the tone just doesn't seem to fit within a charge. This work into the rollout will focus exclusively, of course, on our fiber, to be clear. I mean, it's very, you know,
colloquial.
Yeah, or, or what do I got to say? It's.
Right.
Snarky.
No, well, not even, yeah. Oh, I wanted to, there's a word, there's, oh, well.
Well, it's kind of informal. I, I see. So I think you want to say this work for completion of the rollout will focus exclusively on fiber.
Right, just say, state the facts, yeah.
What about this part, though? To be clear, it is not the role of the committee to do all these other things. You want to keep that in?
Exclusively on fiber tells us what it's about. I mean, it sort of says, hey, in case it's not enough to tell you what we're exclusively doing, we're going to tell you what we're also not doing.
Do other members agree with Matt or want to leave this part in?
Exclusive says exclusive. We're excluding other things.
Right. Linda, Henry, Susan, do you agree with Matt or take out this to be clear or leave it in?
Well, okay, yeah, I would go on. okay, yeah, I would go along. I don't know, I think if you take out the phrase "to be clear", I agree with what Matt's saying, you know, I know it says exclusive, but I don't know.
I agree with you, Susan. I, I think we need to spell it out.
When I, when I read this in its totality, I guess my immediate concern, two things, my first reaction was, you know, we've got expertise in the community that can really help us with this. My second thought was, but I don't want them getting into the other areas of communications that are the purview of the CMLP or elsewhere. And so, and I think when you've got multi-talented people in this area, there's a temptation. So I like being specific about it.
So I still think we could get rid of the sentence that starts with "to be clear" because the very next sentence says "in particular" that will not study or explore cellular phone service solutions or internet access based on wireless technology. So it's like as if we said we're exclusively doing this and we're not doing this, we're also, by the way, we're not doing this.
The department, I've read down its department.
Yeah, we're really not doing this.
Okay, that sounds like a good compromise. All right, let's go on to the next page.
Yeah, cut that middle sentence, the second or the third.
Let's see. Does anyone have any comments on what we're seeing on the screen now, which is more about the duties and responsibilities?
Well, this is also an area in which the town meeting voted to some degree on some of these things, so we, you know, we need to respect that.
Right, I think the red comments are added by.
They're good, they're good additions, I think.
I, I, yeah. All right, well, let's keep going. We're doing really well with this. Okay, number four, just now says summary, summary of public input related to the town's fiber network. All that crossed out stuff about the public hearing was moved to the other section that I pointed out previously. And.
Terry, is everyone going to know what MDUs are?
Someone to find.
I think it was earlier in there.
Number one.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy, right there. I think that was David Allen who put that in. Thank you, David. Or five. Do we want this in? The committee's report should analyze the need for an extension to this task force or perhaps a dedicated fiber broadband committee or board to ensure citizens receive transparency. Don't really know if we want to put in number five or we don't.
I would like to reserve that to the board's discretion.
I agree. I think that, yeah, okay, let's take out number five. All right, any other comments on this section? Because this is the hardest section, and then the last section's really easy. So it, because what I think I'm going to do is make all these changes and we'll take another look next week. Let's look at that last section for a second. Oops, we have more of this section. Okay. This A, B, and C was in the article 41 itself, but this just flushes it out a little more. These bullets were put in by Gail. And section D is something that is in every single charge. We have open meeting law, conflict of interest law, and all the relevant bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. And then I agree with the comment someone wanted in as an appendix, let's put in the article itself.
Yeah.
Jeremy, if you could just go back up a little bit just to make sure, because I went really fast through the A, B, and C. What, yeah, what, stop.
Oh, wait, wait, yeah.
Thank you, A, B, and C, right. Anybody have comments on this section?
I thought of it as good examples of the kinds of things that the report would do. I couldn't, I didn't have any objection to any of them, and maybe it's the case, like, because it says it before, that it's not an exclusive list, that at a minimum, I guess, it does have these things. I think that's fine. Again, I thought it was more than was needed in a charge, you know, to get into the table of contents of the report. But, you know, I also don't find anything objectionable other than just that it makes the charge really long.
Okay, other comments from other coordinators about this? Okay, what I'm going to suggest is I'm going to make all the changes that we've talked about and put this back in the packet the next time. We'll take another look, but it seems like we're making some really good progress and I apologize, I forgot to thank all the people who participated in writing this charge, all the people from CMLP, Gail, Mark, David, I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, Carlin, there were a lot of people who helped write this. And I really appreciate it. If any of you who participated want to make a brief, very brief comment or question, I would entertain that now. Okay, I don't see anybody.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I just wanted to say there was, there was some discussion. Yes, our Gail hired for Nancy Road and Concord. I mean, the people who've been commenting on this about the objective of the, the committee, and I think it's important to think about it's completing the fiber is getting it to all the streets. But it's also about, I think they call this the last mile, getting it from the street into the homes, and that's why I think we really need a committee of people with different backgrounds and different interests and how might they use the fiber, so we can think about how does the fiber actually get from the street into the home or the business or where, or the school where it could be used. So I think it's important, and that's why I had the ABC there to really, you know, lay that out. It's not just about like completing the whole town and the street, because that doesn't really help you if you can't get it into your, where you're going to use it. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Could you accomplish that with a focus group, you know, going to some of the targeted populations?
Um, possibly. I mean, I think the, the reason I put it in the Warren article and put the short timeframe on is because of the pandemic. Everyone really, you know, understands the importance of the internet and I wanted to get some ideas in writing before town meeting in case there's something that we can act on. I certainly think there are topics that can be addressed later, or are we thinking focus group during the committee's work?
So typically, some of our committees will make contact with other committees by sending, you know, various members. So someone could go to COA, someone could go to one of the buildings that you've mentioned.
Right, during the six-month work, sure, yeah, that's definitely what I had in mind.
So they wouldn't necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily need to have a representative on the committee?
Right, right.
And still be able to get that information and also raise the awareness about what you were working on?
Right.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Gail, for bringing this whole issue up to our attention, and we will hopefully complete the charge and adopt it at our next meeting. Anybody?
Here in the audience, I don't see any other one speaking from the audience, so I have to go to Zoom.
Oh, we have one on Zoom from Lois Suarez.
Lois Suarez, 34 Everett Street apartment 10B. Much like the, the person just ahead of me, Gail, I think it is saying that you keep addressing multi, multi-dwelling units. I live in a multi-dwelling unit, but this is the piece from my unit to the street, and that's the biggest piece in the conversations I've previously had with the light company about getting access here. I live at Everett Gardens, just so if you're not familiar, the 34 Everett Street is Everett Gardens, the complex of Everett Gardens, and then the Peter Bulkley building. And so I would like you to say you need to really have access to the complex and then the multiple buildings in the complex and the multiple units in the buildings that are in the complex. It sounds complicated, but it's very simple and straightforward when you look at it physically, but that's.
Thank you, Lois. I, my understanding is that this committee is going to look into this because some of it is a technical issue of getting from the street to the buildings, and some of it has to do with the political organization of how the building is managed. Yeah.
I understand that, and I've been, I understand the conversation of that. I also understand that the competitor can come in here and in minutes replace or redo something very, very quickly. They have a different standard of installation is some of the bottom line. And, you know, I don't know the right or wrong of it, but I just know I have this service where I live, physically live, I live next, I'm in an apartment that's next to the scout house, and I have people that like from Walden Street, there's a little court kind of houses. I am within feet of broadband service, and yet I cannot get it and have not been able to for a number of years. And the other piece is when there's new buildings being put in in town or new construction, when they redid the Peter Bulkley building, there was conduit put in from, from the street to the Peter Bulkley building, but that conduit belongs to the competitor. It's, the conduit does not, is not neutral. It's not, it doesn't belong to the housing authority. It belongs to your competitor. So it can't be used, even though that conduit is there. It's, you know, it's available, wires could be pulled through it, whatever. This is the kind of thing that until you, until I started investigating and going and keep asking and re-asking, like, why can't I get service here? This, it is a bit complicated, but it's that street to the complex, the buildings in the complex that seems to be the biggest wall or, you know, stone wall from the, from the, the light plant at this point in time. Now, maybe that's just their words. I, I don't know. I don't know enough of the technical. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what this committee will hopefully figure out and resolve.
Can you, but can you please stay rather than, when you say just multi-dwelling buildings, it sounds like it's a duplex on Main Street or duplex on, you know, whatever, Central Street. It's into that complex. It's into the places like Concord Green, wherever, and I understand the comp, the, the other part, the political and the who's paying what and how the the distribution is wired. I do understand some of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move on to our next item.
Now, we have two more people looking to speak.
Okay.
Just briefly, I guess I'll, I'll go. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Mark Howell, 668, and there's that Hill Road. And speaking specifically to the work you're trying to do on the charge, I agree that the charge has to meet the requirements of the town meeting vote, and I would indicate that in some cases, you know, those requirements don't really reflect what I would put in places as the priorities. In particular, it's been commented on, the timeframe is an unfortunate constraint in this area, but I believe that the committee or task force, and I do like task force as a phrase for this work, can do so by reporting as required by February on specific issues related to fiber construction and make policy recommendations to support that goal. But ideally, the same group that, that is then put in place would keep going after that to work on some of these deeper issues. The recent experience and the discussion this evening immediately prior has provided many with the community with an opportunity to gain a great deal more understanding of the important role that broadband service and the internet plays in the life of our community. It's truly an enabler of our current way of life. This meeting couldn't be taking place. I couldn't be talking to you without it. So it's my hope that as the select board considers the charge for this task force, it does look at those broader concerns and incorporate some of that thinking into the charge and really ask this group to start looking at this service's viability as a business and more importantly, the investment and financial policies that guide it and how they reflect the values of our community. That's what I hope the charge would do. So what I'm saying is do article 41 and then do some more, because this is really important to the community. Thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you, Mark. And there was another person who wanted to speak?
Yes.
Myself, David Allen. Good evening, another marathon evening. I want to appreciate the artfulness of the current draft writing that foresaw the continuation after the February deadline. On that topic, at the same time, let me try to underline as profoundly as I can here what I wrote in the notes that a number of you, anyway, have seen. There are two completely different tasks here. One is the completion of the the build-out, and the other is what I would phrase, to put it in a couple of words, conquer broadband futures. Barriers and opportunities in the language of the article. Those are two completely different tasks, and they require two very different sets of skills. There is zero question that's the first one, the buildup will take every minute of any reasonable system committee right up to February. It is, makes no sense whatsoever to imagine that you can do both that and conquered futures. A good bit more important than that is the point, however, that it takes two completely different sets of skills. Let me put it this way, I would have significant difficulty expecting I could get my techie friends around town, and Concord has got some dynamite, blowaway, techie expertise, CEOs, entrepreneurs, technical excellence that.
I'm going to ask you to be brief, because we're running late, so.
Understand, of course. I hope you will shave off that last set of various things that the committee might look into, save that and consider a second committee, and I mean a completely different committee. I can then get into the futures. Let me also very briefly notice on Gail's observation, those who know about the setup of Conquer Brand, but know that there was a very delicate balance struck financially about getting the fiber from the street into the home. We're already, already going to spend order of $10 million just to complete. You put on the stuff from the curb into the home and in another 10 or 20 million dollars. You can't lightly suggest those things. You have to know what we're talking about. It's late, but guess what? This matters, as we discovered when it went out for five days. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, thank you, everybody. We will.
There, we, there, we have one more with Pamela Dritt.
Okay, Pamela will be the last person, and then we will continue the discussion next time, anyway.
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green Unit of Unit Four. I lost after the Concord Broadband and can't get it myself, but that's aside. Also, the broadband. the broadband is connected in principle to Concord Municipal Light Plant's desire to make a smart grid, to allow uh smart meters. Uh, and the uh concern a lot of residents have with Wi-Fi connected or uh non-wired connections for the meters. And we need, where is the consideration of getting the the meter connections through uh wired through our um fiber optic system to alleviate those worries so that we can create a um modern new conquered, providing its own electricity and control.
Okay, thank you, Pamela, and um that sounds a good topic for the uh CMLP board to think about. I I think that's kind of beyond where the select board is.
Well, it can't happen unless that the uh fiber optic is actually in all the buildings. Those are connected.
Okay, well, we will. We definitely look into that. Okay, thank you. Okay, now at this time, we are going to go to the next item, which is number eight, adopt select board goals for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. At our last meeting, we had a focused meeting. It was long but successful. We have a final draft here with in the packet with a few typos and considerations that have been corrected. Does any select board member have um comments or any additional changes needed?
Um, yeah, there values of guiding principles, economic resilience. There was a change from the gerund to a verb. Uh, and that none of the other items start with a verb. Well, so.
Okay, um. I do not have that in front of me. I did, but I've lost it.
I mean, the the way it was phrased before, protecting the vitality of the town businesses and businesses and reducing obstacles to their success was closer to the kinds of phraseology, though not exactly the same than protect the vitality of the town, which is more active, but doesn't match anything else that's up there.
Doesn't have a familiar end.
Yeah.
Why? Now I know it's getting late. We're getting into this level. Okay.
I didn't mind what a gerund is.
This I N G, protecting.
All right, other comments on the select board goals. All right, do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the select board twenty FY twenty two goals as drafted, the draft of seven twenty two, twenty one, with the one change of step, you know, maintaining that are not making the change of economic resilience that's proposed under values of guidance.
Second.
Okay, uh, this Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
I think we need to let the man make the change that he wants to make. Hi.
Mr. Johnson, hi. We have our new set of goals.
Yay, we will post that. Jeremy, please post that on the website. Excellent. Okay. Now, um, we have a presentation and discussion on economic vitality reorganization.
Yes, that's me. So I do you have the slides?
Yes.
So um just by way, a little bit of background. In vision conquered, the long range plan talked about a greater focus on economic vitality. In the packet, there are two um documents, ones a set of slides. I wouldn't even call it necessarily a PowerPoint presentation. Um, but the other and then a a memo from Marcia Rasmussen that kind of lays out the goal set forth in long range plan as well as the vision for economic vitality as a division of the department of the Department Plan Planning and Land Management hereafter, DPLM. So as you can see on the screen, um, under the charter, when the town manager, you know, the town manager needs to seek the approval of not less than three members of the select board to either establish, combine, reorganize, or discontinue departments under the town manager supervision. And then trend and with these approval of the board and the finance committee, transfer all our part of appropriation to discontinue department to any other department. Um, this is really a division level reorganization, but I thought it'd be important to bring this to the board because it's a pretty it's a pretty pretty significant change uh to to the organization and the services we provide. So I wanted to bring it here. So this in the smallest print we could possibly find is the um current organizational chart for um both the town manager and on the one hand, the deputy town manager who oversees the human services department, which includes the recreation division, which currently holds the visitor center, as well as you can see that the the department, DPLM, and the four divisions therein. So then this would be the proposed. You can see that the visitor center would no longer be under the human services department. And it would be combined with the economic vitality division and placed under DPLM as as another division. So what that look like? This is this would be the organizational chart. This would be a fifth division um under DPLM and therefore the economic vitality and tourism manager would report directly to the head of DPLM, in this case, Marcia. And then you can see where it would not would no longer be in the uh in the org chart under the deputy town manager. Um, this is just a brief budget before and after. This is when it was in rec revolving funds. These are some of the services that just really reflected the work of a tourism coordination effort. And then the next slide is the um what it would be, what the budget is, and this was approved at town meeting um would be under DPLM. It's it's obviously a lot more. Now, the line items, there's a lot of, you know, you know, expense line items and things like things like that, but I just really wanted to illustrate the point that it's really being built out into a much bigger division than than currently exists. So that would be it for the slides. And if everybody's had a chance to review the memo, I certainly would invite Marcia to summarize for those who haven't, if the board would would prefer that.
I do.
Marcia, do you have anything? Um, Marcia, if you have any key points to add. Um, that's fine.
I think my memo um covers the majority of it. Beth Williams and I have worked very closely over the past year and and a half um on various activities in support of local businesses and and the economic vitality of the community. And I've seen where there's a good integration between what is being offered through tourism um and the support we can offer for our local businesses. So um this has been an area where my division has identified a need for having an economic development planner. And we've made that request since twenty eighteen. There's been no funding for the position. But this economic vitality division then would be become a part of what what planners across the Commonwealth do on a regular basis there. Um, we have been involved with a lot of different programs and discussions. And so it's it's an evolutionary process, I think, an iterative process that we're going to see. Beth Williams brings a lot of strength to various aspects of tourism that can translate beautifully into economic vitality. And I think we've seen a measure of her efforts over the past year. So um I'm I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Terry.
Yeah.
I I guess to kind of before we get into more detailed questions, I guess the thing I want to say is um in addition to kind of the 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 table being set for this by envision conquered by the long range plan, um, the experiences we had during the pandemic and the assistance, the types of assistance that businesses really needed and the relationships that we built through um that time really brought into focus not only um what the needs are, but what we can do to meet those needs. And I think that it was one of these things where I think even before the pandemic, we were I I I've been I have to economic development experience going back twenty years. I started my municipal career in economic and community development. So I in all of my experience in doing this, the link between tourism um and economic vitality has always been strong. And what we really wanted to do is build up that coordination. This is pre-COVID. And then when the pandemic hit and the businesses were under such great strain, it was the need for coordination. It was need for uh regular communication and access to our our departments that provide either that provide support or assistance or have some level of regulatory oversight. And and that's where the picture of what do we really need to be doing to support economic vitality and and grow economic vitality in our community happens. We really learned that in real time and Marcia and Jeremy and Beth were really instrumental and Aaron Stevens were really instrumental in being that kind of uh core team on providing that assistance and uh, you know, Jeremy working with the restaurants, you know, I think we've learned things about what restaurants need and how the best how best to communicate with them that are going to be a part of this effort going forward. You know, we're engaged with the Economic Vitality Committee about um making ways to make it easier for businesses to either set up or to continue to operate. And a lot of the conversation goes through Marcia because a lot of the things that from a regulatory standpoint, touch businesses happen here at DPLM. And so um it's a natural fit for DPLM. And I will tell you that in all of my years in economic development, I always worked in the same department as the planning department. Most and in most communities I'm familiar with for that exact reason, planning and economic development and community development are all under the same roof, if you will. Uh, and so I think, like I said, this is a a natural extension of what was set um in the long range plan and and really the direct, the derivation of real time learning during the pandemic.
Thank you. So uh let's entertain questions from the board.
If Susan was the first to say she has.
No, I just looking at the budget before and after, I, you know, I kind of jump into the numbers. But um the general, the first page is recreation revolving fund and then second page is the proposed, but I mean, why do you have overtime, for instance?
So she's asking about the general fund.
Yeah, the first page. Revolving fund. And then the second page is the proposal.
There are some hourly employees that that work for.
All of the tourism guides at the visitor center.
There are.
They are hourly, yes. True. Um, but the if if they were working more than a a certain period of time, they may need that overtime. We also, I think, are trying to cover some of the uh police details, so that doesn't overtime cost that we would have.
Yeah, for for special events.
Special events.
Events. Yeah, well, don't.
Like the sidewalk sales or where you have a street closed requires a police detail.
Kate Hodges, deputy town manager. The um historically, what would happen is that when we were open through recreation, we had somebody that was available during the off hours because recreation's operation was seven days a week and much longer than the typical business hours. And so we didn't have an overtime line item because if something happened invariably, somebody was generally available to come down and 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 fix something, even if it was a toilet or a sink or, you know, some kind of computer issue. And so taking it um out of, you know, an operation that has more extended hours requires that we be able to pay for that when we have to call somebody in. And so it would likely either be someone from the facilities department. Um, if in fact it's something that they can handle or or private company, and usually those are four hour minimums.
Okay, thank you.
So um to follow up on that, before we get into other budget questions, I had kind of a general question. The revolving account is where it is now and the total is thirty two thousand. Then you come thirty two two five oh, then you come down to the proposed budget and it's a much larger number. And so I really didn't understand how it lined up at the thirty two thousand. Where is that in the new budget and what are all the other things? So for example, the overtime, it sounds like it was paid for out of other budgets before. I so I I maybe someone could explain this.
Um, I'll try to take a stab at it here. Um, so the budget that you're looking at on this slide is the general fund appropriation. But when we were, um, so when my division was given the visitor center from the former town manager, we actually generated revenue there that we put through the revolving fund. So there was effectively two budgets. There was a budget that was general fund appropriation and the majority of that went to the upkeep of the actual building and keeping the restrooms open. And then the money that was generated in the visitor center from tours, uh selling of merchandise. We did special events, the Jazz Fest that was throughout there. We deposited that money into the revolving account where we got an appropriation so that we could spend that. So what what you're seeing from the other side is um just the expenses. What hasn't happened is there hasn't been a budget for money that's going to be generated there. And then, I guess, funneled through either a separate account that the manager um or Marshall will set up probably this next fiscal year going. So there'll be a separate revolving account, I would imagine.
Special revenue fund, yeah.
Yeah, with an appropriation. We don't have that right now. So recreation has generated through the visitor center since two thousand seventeen, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And so whenever we had an overage, um and every year, uh except for last year, we did have an overage, we put it back into the center. And so what you'll see is there's there's two different line items and I'm happy to produce those. If that's something that the board wants to do, but effectively in two thousand seventeen, we made about twenty thousand dollars more um than we needed. And so we took that money and we repaired the sprinkler. We did something, a couple of things outside with the bricks and we did some of the landscaping. The money that we made in eighteen and nineteen, we used to um build up the second floor. So Ben's office is there along with a second office and another restroom on the upstairs. So that's kind of how that's kind of how we did it. Does that answer your question a little better, Terry? Or just create more?
Yeah, I I I'm trying to find the budgets and I I I don't think you line them up. I don't think I'm understanding.
So, well, I think, can I just bring us back to center? The the budget was approved at town meeting.
Which one?
Both of them. Yeah. And so I put that, you know, we had a conversation about what's the the budgetary impact. And I and I was looking at the budget to show for illustrative purposes that it was a full division within a department and that it was um an expansion of um the functions and and the types of things that were going to be funded for the general fund. That was really what the purpose of of putting the slides in um was to show that, you know, we made it a part of our budget presentation and and we want to show what that looked like.
So the anticipated revenue that's um for this coming year, does that show up in the budget?
No, the anticipated revenue um would be for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty two would go through, would just go into the general fund. No.
I I was under the impression that we would continue to use the revolving fund, the the fund through recreation, that there would be a line for because we don't have a means for taking that money and then reallocating it for the visitor center. That line item exists within the recreation.
Yes.
Account according to Carrie LaFleur. So the money would continue to be set aside into that revolving fund. It would be used to pay for some of the services that recreation continues to offer, such as my rec uh for organizing or or scheduling tours with different people or for paying for different programs that is offered through the visitor center. And um it it's a little bit skewed right now because we we hadn't clearly defined how we were going to handle everything. And I think next year, when we go to town meeting, there will be a separate, we will separate completely for now. The revenue is taken in.
Yeah, it's a special revenue. In in March is right. We had talked about a few different options and we did settle on during our transition period. Yeah, it's a special revenue. In, in March is right. We had talked about a few different options and we did settle on during our transition period, sticking with the rec revolving. You know, using some of the assets that they've, they've already been building on and then go for a special revenue account to be established by town meeting. And I think one of the things we wanted to do was as a part, like I said, the transition isn't as March has said, an iterative process and we're kind of let's say one step at a time, but there are certain things that have to happen in sequence. And we'll have a much better picture of what this division looks like from a revenue collection standpoint when we go to town next year.
Can I ask a question now? So I guess what I'm confused about is while I really appreciate the initiatives that have been taken by the planning division in economic development over the past year and a half in response to COVID, I also do think that you know, the, the planning aspects, the regulatory and the development aspects all are well aligned with what the planning and land management division does. There's also this aspect of the visitor center, which kind of pops out on the chart. And that is a, you know, consumer services, it's got retail, it's all operations. And it just sounds so much more like the stuff, the human services, recreation department, all that end of the, of the town government. You know, taking in money spent, you know, it, it, other than through fees for, for regulatory services. And I just think, well, it, it just seems like this putting it all one side or the other is problematic. It sounds like there's two aspects to the business and one side should be on one piece and one should be on the other. It, it, I, I don't, I mean, the visitor center is the division of planning and land management ready to run a retail operation like the visitor center. You know, with its hours, they're, they're very different from everything else you guys do, whereas with the human services, that's very similar to everything else they do.
Well, I understand if, if you're looking strictly as the visitor center. However, with the work that I've been doing with the West Concord Junction Cultural District and the Concord Center Cultural District and the whole orientation that we have with historic resources and the historical commission. I think they, all that information just flows beautifully into what the visitor center can offer in terms of tours or in terms of information for people. But it's that synergy of, of, of the tourism aspect of providing those concierge services, bringing people into the community and then creating packages for them, working with businesses to create those packages. By the same token, businesses that want to come into the community, it's creating a package for those businesses to say, if you need to, if you, if you want to build, if you want to start this business, here are the groups that you need to see. And if we have to have that person who is both economic vitality and tourism, that coordinator who's working out the both pieces, they are able to, hopefully they are able. And I think what we've seen is that Beth has been able to put them all together into one package. We have worked very closely in getting the micro enterprise grants for the community. She has done the outreach to businesses to let them know about it. I've been writing the, writing the grants on the backside so that I'm doing the project management component of her, the grant management program, and she is delivering it to the businesses. There have been, there's the Mott Grant, which is a Massachusetts Office of Tourism Grant, looking at how do we work with our sister community of Lexington to, to get the word out about our two communities? And then how do we evaluate that information as it comes in? So there, there is a, a strong planning component to the visitor center that you never see because of the work that she is doing.
So again, I, I see all the things you're saying, it sounds like economic, you know, vitality and development activities, but they're not like the day to day operational running of a visitor center. I guess that's where I'm still a little lost in why I don't understand why it couldn't just continue to operate. I mean, the scheduling of tour guides sounds so much like scheduled yoga classes. It's just very similar. Set of operations.
I, I mean, I think that's a, just, there's a much bigger picture here. And I think that the tour, the visitor center does offer restrooms for people. It, it, you know, has brochures and pamphlets and part of, you know, tours and, and, you know, business, businesses that are in town. But it's also the hub of where our tourism, our tours are booked. I mean, Beth spends a lot of time coordinating with tour companies and things like that. And, and the linkage that we now have is a tour company will come to town. And then Beth will connect with businesses that may be interested in, in having that bus, you know, stop by their business or have a tour group come into the business because it, not every business likes the, the tour groups. And so we have a, a, we do as an author's tour. And she lined up a couple of different stops that were really interested in, in connecting with the, this group of, of authors. Like the bookstore, for example. And, and this is the type of inter, of interaction and integration that we really hadn't had before. I mean, I mean, there really was no economic vitality apparatus of the town at all. Right. And, and I think that we're fortunate that you know, not only the experience I bring, but also the experience Beth has, the work Marsha has done, the community, the work Kate has done to build up the visitor center and kind of really build a really strong organization there. It really, the pieces all kind of fell into place where I think is a really innovative approach, but also one that's really common in terms of that merging economic and community versus planning development.
But it just seems like a very neat split and, and for example, even the awkwardness over the revolving fund versus the general fund expenses and not having to kind of do a cross charge. And it just seems again, like it, it fits from an accounting point of view as well. To have that, that split of the operations and the development.
So I've been coming on two things. One, in this case, I think we're talking about the same person. Who would be coordinating for that.
But not staffing the visitor center, right?
In part, but also there are others that staff the visitor center. I mean, I just feel like it's a myopic way of looking at it. I mean, is there, the, the visitor center does, does, does a lot more than, like I said, it, it's, it is, it is the front end of what is a much larger process or a much larger offering of services than just what you see when you walk into the visitor center.
You are correct. There's, there's twenty or so employees that are on miscellaneous comp schedule, which is what we pay.
Yeah.
But that's not that.
I mean, if I work for McDonald's, I'm not the same as a franchisee, you know, the, the, the people that run the, the stores. They, they're totally different from the people that are coming up with the, you know, new Big Mac. They're, they're, they're just, you know, it's a whole different thing.
If I may jump in, I am also wondering if Beth's job description has changed. And if so, has it been approved by the personnel board?
I, that's another part of the process that we're working through. We've had, we've certainly looked at the job description and, and, you know, created drafts. But we are working on that. I mean, there's no, there's no job if, if we don't do the reorganization. But we do have, we are working on update job description. It would go, it would have, be subject to a, a review, a competent, a classification review, and then it would go to the personnel board.
All right. And similarly, whether Marsha's job description would need to be changed or give her a boost in pay or, and really, Marsha, I know how busy you are. You've told me you have eighteen committees you supervise. Whether you have time to add in this whole new division. And, and whether that means your job description changes.
Or the deputy town managers for that matter.
Well, I, I think, and, and Marsha can speak for herself, but I mean, we, we've spent a lot of time working on this and, and kind of getting to this conclusion and, and the proposal you see in front of us, we've talked about it internally at length. And part of the, part of the discussion was Marsha and I talking about just that question.
There are, I mean, if you look at DPLMs as it exists today, we have four divisions. And they are led by some very strong directors of each of those divisions and the, and the building commissioner. They are experts in their fields. I don't argue with them about how they interpret the language of their, their various regulations. But I am there to support them. And I think that working with Beth will be the same type of thing. Working with economic vitality is the same type of thing where I provide that planning support. Can provide the guidance and, and be that liaison, that coordinator that works through SMT with the different department heads to make sure that the path is clear for economic vitality to go forward. So I, I don't think, yes, I am busy. Yes, we have twelve different boards and committees that we staff. And yes, there are four divisions. But it's a strong, very active, very professional group of people. And I think that this will it's a dovetail beautifully with what planning has been doing and the direction that we've been going. So I, I think it's a value added to have it part of DPLM.
Okay. So, so I appreciate what you're saying that that professionals working for you, they know what they're doing. So it sounds like you're saying there's not a need to change the job description for the DPLM manager, director, or, or any kind of change in classification or pay for Marshall's position then. Is that basically what you're saying?
I'm saying we're still, we, we haven't really gotten to that place yet. But that's, that's really kind of a personnel thing.
Being promoted from somebody way down on the org chart as a subsidiary to the recreation department and being elevated to a department head on a plan, on a par with building inspection, that's what we saw as element, planning that, that would be a higher, a higher compensation level.
You're talking about Beth?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think that's something that, that we're going to go through with the job description process and the classification process and and, you know, that, that'll be a result of that and we'll bring that to the personnel board.
That's not a negative consideration for it, but I assume that she would be compensated in, you know, in accordance with her administrative level.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I want to be, be clear on, on the, the part about like the visitor center versus economic vitality and, and that's your point. I, I think you, you use the analogy of the person like working at McDonald's versus the person who creates the new Big Mac. I think one of the, the, one of the things that is essential in economic development, and Marsha touched on this, is having in a department or a division that knows how to do both, because both are important. And there's so much connectivity between the development of the next Big Mac and the customer experience on like, you know, on the grounds, you know, where, where the customers footsteps hit the road. That's having it all in one place is really essential. And that's, that, that really is you know, economic vitality one O one is being able to do that concierge level, you know, handle small problems, greet people. A visitor to town comes in, they're greeted by a, a, a tour guide or a volunteer, Beth, and it's immediately, they're selling conquered and the businesses in Concord. And so that's where, that's one of the benefits of doing it this way is you, you, you get that integration. I think when you use that analogy of like, I'm separating out the customer, like the direct customer interaction and then, and the development of like bigger ideas, all I can think of is New Coke. And keeping them separate.
I hold the membership of the Concord Business Partnership and the Economic Vitality Committee. And all of the comments I got back were positive for this change, provided that it was made clear that Beth would report directly to Marsha.
And that's was clear on the org chart that, that it's, it's a division. It's important, I said, that she, the, the division has to have standing to be effective in, in serving the business community and, and like, and, and being able to push forward, you know, big ideas.
Okay. Other comments, questions from the board on this?
I would just say that there is some merit in being able to point to a specific economic vitality division. And in this case, with the outreach to the businesses in terms of how the, it's perceived by the community and, and the business community. And it's not unusual when you're trying to build a new unit, that sometimes a piece of it may not quite fit in the new home that it signs. But you live with it for a while and see if it's going to stick. You know, I think if we look at org charts for other municipalities, you can go down and say, why is that over there? Well, it could be the leadership, it could be, you know, the, the structure that they are anticipating for the future or, you know, there are a number of items. So, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's been proposed on that basis.
I prefer to see sort of an evolutionary approach where you initially have, you, you establish the new function and elevate it. But then you keep the operations, especially given that the financing of it is not going to transition this year. You know, for that first year and kind of make that a transitional year and then you can bring it over if it makes sense. You know, again, I'm not managing the town. I'm just, you know, stating that would be my preference, but yeah, but just waiting.
Feel better if we put in McDonald's and the visitors?
I, I hear you, Matt. Let me say, let me say this. I, I think we all hear you. And certainly as we move forward, we want to sort of bear that comment in mind and make sure that we, if, if it's a square peg in a round hole, that we aren't afraid to make a subsequent change. I, to, to Linda's evolutionary point, I mean, I think the thing is what we try and do as an organization, as departments, as town manager, is we see the goals are set by the select board and a long range plan that says, here's where we want to go. And we use our professional expertise and experience and skills and partnerships and working together and feedback from the community and say, well, then here's, here's how we think is the right way to get there. And so this proposal is really months in development, really, is our best, is our best assessment of how do we get to those goals that were articulated by Vision Concord, by the Economic Vitality Committee, by the feedback we got from businesses, by the business partnership. We take in a lot of input and we try and do the best we can to show that the things we're doing reflect that. And, and I, I think it does. And, and if it doesn't for you, then, then we'll continue to, to, to make sure that we do take that input and have it guide our future.
Well, that, that is actually my question. What happens, Stephen, if we don't, we're not ready to vote for this tonight? Can we come back and have a future meeting or, or what, what will happen if we don't vote for this tonight?
I mean, if, like I said, the budget has already been approved, you know, we do the work that, that Marsha and Beth and, and and I do to support businesses and the coordination that we have with Kate and the rec department will continue as, as it has been. I think just you know, I, I guess, like I said, I'm, I felt like this was something that we've talked about. Certainly, we did the budget presentation and I know we've, we've talked to the
Actual change on the ground has already taken place.
In some, in, in many ways, yes, but in some ways, no.
Well, the, the reason I'm bringing, the reason I'm bringing up this question is because I still don't understand the financing at all. And I'm, I was thinking, instead of picking up a lot of time here, I would go over it offline, Stephen, with you and Carrie. Cause I, I'd like to see the old revenue, the new revenue and all budget and new budget. I, I, I'm sorry, but I'm like completely lost as to this is all flowing and what was voted and what still needs to be voted.
Well, I, I guess I would say, Terry, that, that, that is kind of besides the point. Because the point is to get the organization aligned to do the goal, to fulfill the goals, to do the economic vitality. The, because you're going from revolving fund, which is like an enterprise fund budget, separate from the, from the general fund budget into a general fund category, it is complicated. And I think we would sit down with you and, and go through that detail as much as you wanted, but that's besides the point of what we're trying to talk about tonight. That's, that's a derivative. The funding change is a derivative of the organizational change, not the other way around.
All right. But in order for me to understand it, I come from a place where I, I'm trying to figure out are we, why is it going from thirty two thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand? Are we adding eighty thousand? I mean, I'm, I mean, the fundamental basics of it, I'm lost.
Well, again, I think that the, and we can, we can have that conversation. Well, again, I think that the, and we, we can have that conversation separately. It, but what we're, we're not, I mean, I guess I didn't view this as a budgetary conversation and that it, the budget is certainly one component of it.
Right.
But, um, you know, the long-range plan doesn't say we, we should do this as long as it makes sense in, in the financing. It's, it's, we're doing it in the, and we're going to make the financing work to achieve the goal.
Okay. But that's where I'm lost. And also I have personnel questions. I, I'm not sure we're there yet on the personnel piece. I think a lot of it though, as you answered, um, if there is a chicken and an egg aspect to this, right? Well, um, so it sounds like first you want the board to approve, the overall idea of it. And then you're going to fill in the budget details and the personnel job description type of detail.
Well, I think it's just under the charter. We, we, we're being consulted for that.
Yeah, the rest of that falls out from an operational standpoint, Terry. I think that, that this is the organization, all, all we're looking for is the organizational change. All the other stuff falls out as a result of the organizational change. And like I said, we did the budget part first because we didn't want to make the change, not have a way to, to fund it. And now we're coming here for the organizational change. If the board approves that, then we'll move forward with the, with the necessary personnel changes.
Okay. I guess that, that's why I'm lost though. If you've done the budget change and I don't understand it, but I want to take up a lot of time with that here. Um.
I mean, do you support, do you support the concept of the organizational change based on the information that Marsha and I provided?
I, I think I'd like to ask, um, where the other board members are, whether people are comfortable to take a vote out? Or you, there's more information that some of you need.
Are, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, if Terry isn't comfortable with it, I see no harm in putting it over to our next meeting.
Yeah.
You're, you're.
Our next meeting is August ninth, right?
August ninth.
If I'm the only one uncomfortable with it, I can do it offline with Stephen. But if some.
Point is that we wouldn't have the vote now if, if we're.
Okay. That's up, that's up to you. You know, if, if four people are ready to vote, we can vote.
There's an urgency about this as.
Yeah, it sounds like it's already happening on the ground. So.
So it's almost a formality.
Well, I think we'd like to move forward with the other aspects of this that we've talked about, but I guess another two weeks.
So I'll make a motion that we continue the consideration of this matter until our next meeting on, on August night.
I don't even know if we need a motion for that, but yeah, I don't think we need a motion. If, if we're just gonna table this for now. Yeah. Okay. So we'll, we'll pick it up on August night. All right.
If any of you have finance questions that uh, join me with Stephen, if there's only one of you. I know Susan, for example, you asked some finance questions. I mean, we don't have a board forum, but, um, if you have more questions, let's get them out on the table somehow, um, between now and then.
Well, could.
I think the easiest thing is just to, we can just, just reach out to me individually and we can talk to the questions and then address them in the future discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to just be, what, what we're really just focused on the organizational aspects to, and we, we can get to the financing as good as possible, but, um, understanding that this is an iterative process.
Yeah, she's kind of chicken and egg. We sort of approve some financing, then it's the organization, then you do more financing and, I, I'm. Okay.
Should we move to nominations?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just read out the nominations of Bradley Hubbard Delson of two twenty-one Machontic Road to the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Sarah Fessell of seventeen twelve Monument Street to the Library Committee for a term to expire in April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Saint Mary Rand Bellmore Bolden of one fifty-eight Simon Willard Road to the Library Committee, uh, for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Then moving to appointments. Robert, and I'll move to appoint Robert Abraham of eighty-one Plainfield Road to Hugh Cargill Trust for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Sharon Jones of Eaton Street, Bob Shatton of six, one sixteen Indian Spring Road and Karen Gibson of sixteen forty-one Main Street to the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee for terms to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Ira Goldman of one thirty Monson Road to the Massport Community Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Happy Gother of six oh six Old Bedford Road and Melissa Maxwell of four, four forty-nine Barrett Mill Road to the Agriculture Committee for terms to end on, expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Amy, Amy Kaiser of two eighty-nine Commonwealth App to the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Dan, Ms. Escavator.
Hi.
Matt Johnson, hi.
I like the way you, I like the. Yeah.
Guys fights it up somehow. So I also will move to accept the town manager appointments of Paul Kirshen of thirty-eight Longfellow Road, Brian Krauts of forty-nine Indian Pipe Lane, Courtney Eaton of one forty-one Monson Road and Jake Swenson of one forty Nut Meadow Crossing to the Climate Action Advisory Board for terms to expire April thirtieth. As well as to revoke the town manager appointments with select board approval made at the July twelfth select board meeting of Peter Nickel of five hundred Walden Street and Ruthie Bennett of one fourteen Deer Glass Lane to the Climate Action Advisory Board for terms to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, because those previous appointments were mistakenly made.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman.
Hi. And I just, I just want to comment, it's not, um, nothing that those, uh, committee members did wrong. That was the escape clerk on our part.
They were, they were trying to leave the committee.
Yes.
They were trying to join the committee. Okay. Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dan.
Hi.
Ms. Escavator.
Hi.
And Mr. Johnson, hi. Myself. Okay.
All right. The next item. Next item is liaison reports, which I'm going to, uh, say, let's hold off until next time unless you have something very pressing. And I do have one pressing thing that came up with the finance committee. We, it will come to our meeting next time. Looks like we're going to have another long meeting, but we get the break in the middle. So that's good. Um, there will be a year-end transfer that the finance committee voted that we will be asked to vote as well is for a large sum of money. And, um, we will be getting all the information about it. I just want to alert the board that that is coming.
A what transfer?
It's a end of the year transfer. It'd be voted by both the finance committee and the select board. Um, and who else has something, um, that can't wait until, now Susan?
Well, I just, it's a, a short thing and you may have already seen it in news and notices, but Natural Resources said that there's a pathogen that's not here yet, but it's, it's, um, affecting birds. And that you should take down your bird feeders and your bird baths. And if you find dead birds, that you should contact mass wildlife because they're trying to track what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We will do liaison reports next time. Miscellaneous correspondence. We have one letter in the packet from Brooks Reed and one from Lucy Goldstein. And at this time, we will take any additional public comment if there is any.
None from the live audience.
Okay. I don't see any. Jeremy.
I see, uh, Mark Galis.
Mark Galis.
Hello, uh, Mark Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road. Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I appreciate the careful discussion related to the economic vitality and tourism. I think that's very important for the town. I actually feel that that ought to be something much broader than, you know, kind of along the lines of what Mr. Johnson was saying, the, there's parts of that that really don't fit into a, kind of, uh, administering rules and, and, and that sort of planning. It ought to be much more creative and broad. And, uh, I think it ought to be directly under the town manager or the deputy town manager as a separate function. Uh, however it's staffed. I, I just don't think that it fits in planning and land management. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diane Proctor.
Thank you. Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. Um, two brief comments. I really appreciate the clarity and the thoughtfulness of the discussion you just had. Because I think, um, perhaps too often, uh, a, a big item has been presented without enough time to really think it through and ask probing questions. And I, I really appreciate the fact that Terry, you held it up a little bit and asked everyone to think about it. So thank you very much. Uh, the, the second comment is just to applaud, um, and, and Henry, this is so you won't tell me to go away. But the, um, to applaud the, 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 the work of the, of the select board to take a topic and really investigate it. I think that has proven invaluable. Uh, so thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Um, additional public comment. I don't see any. Okay. Seeing none, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dan.
Hi.
Ms. Escavator.
Hi.
And Mr. Johnson, hi. That's a wrap.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.